Toolkit that we've created to help the county implement this tool. In the interest of time, skipping ahead to a project context slide shown here that looks across the entire region in DC. In terms of some of the most active, vibrant, successful areas of the region are largely those areas that are. In Maryland, the only one in the region currently is Silver Spring, which is only just now in the process of launching a bid for that area and which spurred the state to actually reduce the threshold for them implementing a bid in that particular county. As we look at this momentum and look at other priorities that the county's advanced in terms of its 2035 strategic investment priorities, investing in three downtowns, designated innovation corridor, revitalizing six reinvestment areas, all of these things can be, you know, helped and supported by having the additional tool of business improvement districts. It by itself will not help to solve economic challenges or economic revitalization, but it's definitely another great tool in the toolbox to leverage on top of these existing investments. As Vanessa mentioned, our goal of this project was to increase understanding of bids, engage with stakeholders, and as the county starts down this road, to create a toolkit to facilitate creation of bids. Looking at the output of our work, it was a bid toolkit. That toolkit contains five sections. The first section on understanding bids, the next section on determining bid viability, the next one on forming a bid, operating a bid, and finally tools and templates to actually help in the ongoing operation sustainment of bids. And the goal is just to help from start to finish, to help community leaders, business leaders, and the county implement this program in a structured, strategic way that ensures, you know, the best chance for longevity of these business improvement districts. I'm not going to walk through each section of the toolkit. You do have that in your presentation, and the Department of Planning will be releasing the full toolkit once it's published in the near future. I will skip ahead to our findings of this effort and just talk about kind of where we go next after the release of the toolkit.
Okay, I'm going to stop you just for a second, long enough for me to catch up with you because the slides that we have are not numbered, so I'm just trying to.
They should be looking at number 27, the bottom right corner of the slide.
Okay, well, you know what, don't worry about it. I'll keep, don't worry, we'll follow, we'll follow, no worries.
So as we look forward, you know, with creation of the toolkit, the momentum that's experiencing the county across numerous areas, the TOD zone areas, stakeholder interest from various community groups and business groups, as well as the number of regional models, the time is right for the county to begin examining adoption of a bid program and advancement of bids in the county. Stakeholders have recognized that bids would benefit commercial areas in the county in a number of ways, through vibrancy and identity in different areas, supporting beautification in different communities and neighborhoods, enhancing and supporting public safety, helping to advance infrastructure improvements, and also helping to improve the regional competitiveness of Prince George's County and the communities within the county. As we look forward, however, there are a number of areas that we do want to be mindful of as we look at implementation of business improvement districts. First, the cost of bid at startup and understanding how can the county help support some of these initial bids to make sure that they are getting off on the best possible footing, looking at some areas that are currently in low commercial density, and making sure that, once again, that we, in selecting potential bid locations, that we do select those areas that are most viable for success. A low tolerance for taxation. Given a need for demonstrated tax reduction policies like pilots to spur development, there may be some pushback on adding additional assessments to support bid funding in certain areas. Another area that is of critical importance is making sure that as the county adopts this tool, which can largely support economic development, revitalization, growth, and reinvestment, making sure that those things don't happen at the expense of existing small business and residents, and being mindful of potential displacement of those types of businesses. And then finally, making sure that as these bids are implemented, that we maintain equity and inclusivity within the bid districts, and ensuring that the bids create a place that is welcoming for all existing and future community residents and doesn't create a walled community that might seek to exclude some participants from those areas. There are a number of ways that the county can support bids, both administratively and financially. Three key areas are first and foremost establishing a clear process and protocol for bid formation. This is informed by this toolkit. The next would be designating a public entity that is charged with facilitating bid authorization funding, and then finally providing tangible support such as grant funding and technical assistance to once again reinforce chances of success for these bids. Shown below on this table are some examples across the region and nationally, showing how different communities support bids in areas. So in Washington DC, the Department of Small and Local Business Development is charged with managing the bid program and chartering such bids, and as well as providing grants for economic outreach and research, and grants for store fund improvement as part of their programs. Moving forward, county leadership has several key decisions to make regarding the county's support of bids. First, will the county support legislation that facilitates bid adoption by lowering approval rates, such as Montgomery County has done? Currently, the state of Maryland requires that 80% of property owners approve of bid formation before creating a bid in a particular community. That's a very difficult hurdle to reach, and no bid has been established in the county at that hurdle. Montgomery County sought and received a lowering of the threshold to 50% that now allows for Silver Spring, the first bid in that county, to actually move forward with adopting a bid for the Silver Spring downtown area. The next key decision for the county is to determine if they will support, financially support the exploration and formation of new bids. Once again, looking at a lot of these areas that are still under revitalization, a bid might need some degree of support in its first few years to make sure that, you know, until the tax base catches up, that the bid can actually sustain itself going forward. The final key decision is understanding and adopting a particular county entity or agency that would facilitate the administrative task leading the bids, such as dispersment of government funds, oversight of bids, ensuring compliance with the toolkit and compliance with regulations, and understanding how to staff the agency to make sure that bids do have the best possible chance for success. Local stakeholders, such as property owners and CDCs, can still start this process today to begin holding informal committees to gather interest in formation of bids or bid-like entities, holding visioning sessions to generate interest and gather interest, conducting outreach to property owners in their communities, businesses, and residents, to start to determine community needs and articulate what the bid benefits would be for a particular area, and then finally starting to draft a budget and scope and corresponding services that a bid might provide in their particular community. So based on this effort, you know, we'd love to, you know, hear your feedback based on, you know, the toolkit presentation and where we're going, on other areas that we might want to focus on as we wrap up this effort and begin to move toward implementation. Thank you.
Okay, okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
Did you do any consideration as to whether or not the county might be prohibited from doing it because of TRIM?
Would TRIM in any way?
Kip Reynolds with Community Planning. I believe through discussions with different county agencies, there might be opportunities with certain agencies that have their own taxing authority to take that on. I think that's a real discussion with the county, which agency and who is going to assist with this effort if they choose to go forward.
Derek, Realize Acting Deputy Director, to actually address the question, we'll research it, but I'm 90% sure because TRIM applies to residential property taxes. And bids, they may have residential properties in them, but typically those are rental properties. So in that sense, they're not taxed as owner-occupied properties. Probably it's not an issue, but we'll look into it. And actually, if I could just follow up, so knowing as much as you do about Prince George's County government, what are the options for a agency, a lead agency in your view? Have you looked at that?
Yes, I think there's a couple agencies. The Revenue Authority is one, potentially DHCD. I really think it depends on who has the capacity and the financial ability.
Are there any other questions at this time? First of all, let me commend you for not only a good presentation, but you were able to succinctly, to quickly shift gears and give a succinct presentation of a lot of information within your time limit, with a couple of minutes to spare, I might add. And I do want to say, on behalf of the board, I want to apologize. We're having conference calls and craziness trying to deal with this coronavirus, and so my apologies for not giving you the time that you had originally requested, but we're trying to deal with another issue, but it's no less important to us. We wanted to say that, and it's good to see you again in a different capacity.
Indeed.
Other questions or comments? So can we, if we want to provide feedback, do we have time to provide feedback outside of today?
By all means, we welcome your comments. If we can get those in the next 30 days, that would be great.
Okay, perfect, okay. So we'll work on a time, depending on what we're doing with hearings and whatnot in the future, we'll work on time, we'll work with our planning board administrator to figure out how to get the best feedback to you, okay?
Okay.
Questions, okay? And maybe you can come back, okay?
Okay, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the board's going to be in recess for, yeah, 10 minutes, thanks.
So are you feeling a little better about the elections?
I'm in hearings, okay, what is it?
I'm still in San Zanitas.
Are you?
Yeah, a lot of my friends are not, you know, it's like, you know.
No.
Trump is so tricky.
Good morning, the Prince George's County Planning Board is back in session. Again, it is the month of March, it is Women's History Month, Development Disabilities Awareness Month, which raises awareness of inclusion. It is Irish-American Heritage Month, we celebrate those, everyone with Irish-American heritage. It is National Cleanup Year IRS Mac, it is Month, and it is Optimism Month. March 12th, 1894 Coca-Cola bottled and sold for the very first time, 1912 Girl Scouts founded, 1964, we'll forget that, okay. 1980 pedophile rapist and serial killer John Wayne Gacy was convicted of murdering 33 young males in Chicago. 1985 Boston Celtic Larry Bird scored a Celtic record of 60 points against the Atlanta Hawks. And in Women's History Month, as we celebrate Women's History Month, let's remember that in 1993 Janet Reno was sworn in as the first woman attorney general. We also want to have a moment of silence. Let's start with Barbara Neely, age 78, was African-American mystery writer and author of the Blanche White Mystery series. McCoy Tyner, age 81, Grammy-winning jazz pianist, part of John Coltrane's quartet in the 1960s. Mark Crowley, Tony Award-winning playwright known for his comic tragedy, The Boys in the Band. Max Von Sydow, best known, age 90, best known for his roles in The Exorcist, Star Wars, Three Days of the Conder, and TV series Game of Thrones. Robert Donahoe Senior, age 72, who was a leader in the DC-area real estate development, who died from cancer. He served as board chairman of the Donahoe Companies, founded by his great-grandfather in 1884. I do want to take a moment to also remember the many people worldwide who have died and who are suffering from the coronavirus. So if we could have a moment of silence before I come back to that. Thank you. We had statistics, but I can't, it's really sad, but I can't even keep up with the statistics. Worldwide, you know, last check, we had over 4,200 deaths and over 115,000 global cases. We have countless cases, not countless, we have at least 12 in the state of Maryland, and just so many. I wanted to tell you that we are taking very serious precautions right here at the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission and throughout Prince George's County. There are a number of, we are canceling some of our big events, we've canceled the Women's History, the county exec has canceled the Women's History Month luncheon scheduled for later this month because it usually draws a crowd of up to 1,500 people. The commission is going to cancel its internal Women's History Month luncheon. We're canceling huge events like the AAU championship at Sports and Learning Complex and Equestria event there. We are suspending out-of-state travel for conferences and whatnot for our employees, and we are, we are really taking every effort to make sure that we are keeping our facilities, our seats, our doorknobs, our elevator buttons, our elevators, all of our surfaces clean, we're cleaning them with the requisite cleaning supplies, but we admonish everyone to please be careful, particularly those in a certain age bracket who are more susceptible, and many of us appear in that bracket, let me just say that. We are, we take the health concerns of our community, our Prince George's County community very, very, very seriously, and our regional community very seriously, and we wanted to pass that on to you. We will be posting information as it becomes available, but we just wanted to let you know that our hearts, this is a worldwide pandemic now, and I just wanted to make that statement that we care, and we are working with our county executive, our county council, our governor, the World Health Organization, our health officer, to take every single precaution that we can take. So we want to let you know that we're trying to keep you as safe as possible, and we'll keep you posted on upcoming closures and changes. Thank you. I'm going to start with my agenda. Is there anyone here to oppose the staff's recommendations on items 4A, 4B, or 4D, or any board member who wishes to discuss?
Madam Chair, move adoption of staff findings and approval of items on the consent agenda in accordance with the recommendation of staff.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I'm going to proceed in this order, items eight, five, six, and seven, so staff line up. Item eight, we have a request for continuance?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the planning board, for the record, she is encountering with the subdivision and zoning sections.
Is your microphone?
It's on.
It's on, okay.
Staff is in receipt of a request for continuance for this application dated March 3rd, 2020 from the applicant. Staff is in agreement with the request for continuance.
Okay, okay, we have a motion, we don't have a motion. Was there anyone else to speak on this, just Mr. Rivera? Okay.
Just me.
Okay.
Good morning, Norman Rivera, for the record, we concur with the staff's recommendation.
So it's just for one week to March 19th.
One week to 19th.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this? Is there a motion?
Some, Madam Chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. By the way, the microphones have been wiped down too. Okay.
I wiped it down again after you.
Okay, item five.
Mr. Diaz Campbell, come on, let's go.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the board. For the record, I am Eddie Diaz Campbell, senior planner with the subdivision and zoning section. Item number five on the agenda is preliminary plan of subdivision for the Acquaekee property, 4-18031. The subject project proposes 11 lots and two parcels for a total of 11 one-family detached dwellings. As a matter of housekeeping, staff has received one item of additional backup. This is a letter from the applicant withdrawing the requested variation from Section 24-121A4 of the subdivision regulations.
Did we get that in time before the cutoff yesterday?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
The site is located in the southern part of Prince George's County, within Planning Area 84 and Council District 9. More specifically, the site is located on the east side of northbound Indian Head Highway, or Maryland 210, approximately one mile south of its intersection with Farmington Road. The subject site is located in the rural residential, or RR, zone. The site is bound to the northwest by Maryland 210, with single-family detached dwellings in the residential estate zone beyond. To the west is undeveloped property owned by Prince George's County. To the north and east are single-family detached dwellings, and to the south are institutional uses fronting on Livingston Road. All of the abutting uses on the east side of Maryland 210 are also in the RR zone. The aerial photograph shows that the site is currently vacant. The photo also shows that within the Maryland 210 right-of-way, there are four roadways. These include the northbound and southbound lanes of Maryland 210 proper, as well as the service road on either side of the property, or, sorry, excuse me, on either side of the This photo shows another view of the site from an aerial perspective. The site map shows that the site has varied topography. There's a level-high location in the middle of the property. From here, the site slopes south downward to an on-site stream, and it slopes, and it also slopes downward to the northwest into a swale, which connects to the stream west of the property. Master planned right-of-way map shows Maryland 210. There is no right-of-way dedication proposed or required with this application. There is one critical intersection determined to be impacted by the development, shown by the red bullseye and further described in detail in the staff report. This is the intersection of the service road on the east side of Maryland 210 with Jennifer Drive. Access to the development is via the service road, then Jennifer Drive, and then Henrietta Drive, going through the Treeview Estate subdivision to the north of the property. Given the proposed development, it was found that no improvements are needed to the critical intersection in order to maintain acceptable levels of service. The preliminary plan shows 11 lots and two parcels proposed, outlined in red. The existing and proposed right-of-ways are shown in blue, and the primary management area is shown in green. 10 of the lots are to have access from an extension of Henrietta Drive. The 11th lot is proposed to have access from the Maryland 210 service road. Because this lot is adjacent to a freeway, the applicant filed a variation request to allow this lot to have a lot depth less than 300 feet. The applicant later withdrew the request because sewer service cannot be extended to the lot. Staff is recommending that the 11th lot be removed and its area incorporated into the area of the abutting stormwater parcel.
Which, and the applicant's okay with that, right?
According to their letter, yes.
Okay, so, okay. So, and everything else is as straightforward as submitted in the staff report, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so you're recommending approval?
And disapproval.
But not disapproval of the variation, which is no longer on the table because that part's been withdrawn?
Right, we wouldn't recommend approval or disapproval because it's simply a withdrawal.
Okay, thank you. So is there anything else you have to add at this point?
Probably the noise fences worth touching on.
The what?
The noise fence?
The noise fence. Yeah, there's a noise fence proposed at the rear of lots three through six to address noise impacts from Maryland 210. So it's positioned in such a way that there will be large enough backyards for the homes, and the applicant also provided some images showing what the fence would look like. So we are recommending approval of the noise fence.
On the noise fence, is it going to be wood? Is it going to be vinyl?
It's going to be board and batten.
And the homeowner's going to be responsible for, the homeowners association being?
No, it would not be.
I think they're making a proffer.
Okay, so that, was that it? Because they can answer that question.
Certainly.
Okay, so that concludes your staff presentation because everything else is as set forth in the report. I will tell you that we have someone signed up here to speak to from Treeview Estates, so we're going to be able, I'd like to know what, I'd like to know what, you know, where that person lives. Okay, Mr. Haller.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Thomas Haller, I'm an attorney with offices in Largo, and I'm here today representing the applicant in this case. There's a little backstory here. I helped the applicant's father purchase this property about 35 years ago, which doesn't date me, but it does date him, he was a young man at the time, but he's held the property all these years, and now he's proposing to subdivide it. The property is at the terminus of Henrietta Drive, which is within the Treeview Estate subdivision. It was designed to be extended into this property, and as you can see, there's a total of 10 lots that would access Henrietta Drive. Most of the property actually is being retained as woodlands because it's impacted by the PMA, and so the lots will back up pretty much to woodlands. Was a question raised about the noise barriers. What we did with this particular subdivision was we designed the lots, the grading on the lots, so that the, we call them a wall, but it's essentially a four-foot-high fence is all it is, and it's going to have a gate in it so that the back of the lots, which will remain wooded, they could still have access to them. And so the reason that we didn't have them to be maintained by the homeowners association is because they're just four foot, and they are wood, but they're the board and batten, so there's no opening. It's not like a board-on-board fence where you can see through it at an angle, it's a solid fence, which is what provides the noise barrier, but it's only four feet in height on those four lots. And as staff indicated, we had originally filed a request for a variation to allow Lot 11. We since discovered that that lot does not have access to sewer. There is no sewer in Jennifer Road, which is the service drive along 210, and so we're withdrawing the request for the variation, and we would just request that the planning board's resolution reflect that we have withdrawn the request for the variation. And finally, we did meet with the Acquaekee Development Review Corridor Commission, and their comments are in your backup as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, it's a very straightforward subdivision.
Questions? Okay, thank you. Sheila Kelly? Good morning. Please identify your name and address, thank you.
My name is Sheila Kelly, and I reside at 15705 Henrietta Drive.
Okay, Mr. Diaz Campbell, you're showing us now.
Let me find it. It's about three houses from where you all will be entering for the building, new construction.
Is it this one here? Where my, where my pointer is pointing?
Can you see? Oh. Where the red circle is?
Okay.
Is that about where you live? Is that about where you live?
Not the big red circle, but the one moving.
The little one, yeah.
Small moving one.
Oh, okay. Yeah, on the right side.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we've been watching this property for years because we were told that probably somebody would be building some homes, but we just.
Can you make sure you're talking to the microphone?
A little bit closer, so we can hear you.
We had been watching this property for years and wondering when or if anybody was going to build anything because when we purchased there, we knew that that was the plan, but it never seemed to happen. So now that it is, we didn't know about it until we saw the sign that said there was going to be a hearing. So, um, we just had a few questions, like, we wondered would there be an additional entry into the neighborhood? Or is the only entrance going to be the existing entrance?
When you say we, is that we, you, you and whomever, in your household or your neighborhood or a homeowners association or what?
We don't have a homeowners association.
Okay.
So it's just a few neighbors.
Okay.
My husband and I and about four other families who were living there originally. So there was a question about an additional entry into the neighborhood, and we didn't know how many homes were going to be built, but now I think you're saying there's ten.
Right.
And when is the anticipated beginning date for construction?
We won't have that right now?
All right.
Okay.
And I heard you mention something about a homeowners association for that group. And the noise barrier, um, my knowledge of a noise barrier is usually when it's right next to the highway, so I'm wondering, well, what's the noise barrier for? And especially since it's only four feet. What's the, what's the purpose of a, the noise barrier? Those are my questions right now.
Okay. First of all, thank you for coming, Ms. Kelly. And the reason I asked about a homeowners association is because if you have a registered homeowners association or civic association in the area that's registered with us, you also get, the homeowners association also gets advance notice before the application is even filed. And so it's just something to consider. But I'm going to have the applicant come up and try to answer some of your questions and also ask them to meet with you for a few minutes after this hearing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Okay, was there anyone else to speak? Because that was the only name I had on the signup sheet. Okay, Mr. Haller.
Yes, thank you very much, and I appreciate Ms. Kelly coming down. I know my client did talk to a couple of the immediately adjoining homeowners.
Okay.
The, and if you look at the aerial, I mean, the map that's in front of you, you'll see where the little red, real red dot is. The property immediately adjacent on the south side of Henrietta Drive is a stormwater management pond that's owned by Prince George's County. And then the home, and then the other homes in the subdivision are comparable in size, same zone, same land. The lots are all about twenty thousand square feet. So they're going to be comparable homes. My client plans to start construction or development of the property probably in the fall, and the homes will be comparable to the homes in the adjoining community, so they will be compatible.
Do you, I'm sorry, Ms. Kelly, do you have a copy of the staff report? No, can we get her a copy of the staff?
But I will be glad to stay afterwards and speak with Ms. Kelly.
I would love for you to do that.
I can answer every questions that she does have. But just for the board's information, as you note, as was noted, I think, earlier, there will not, Henrietta Drive will not extend out to the service road because of the topography and the impact on primary management area. It will cul-de-sac, and then the homes will be located on the cul-de-sac. But, but there are only ten additional homes being constructed.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Geraldo, your question was answered or no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kelly, you can, I'm glad you have the staff report now, so you can take a look at that. Mr. Haller has agreed to remain behind and talk with you, he and his clients. So was there anyone else here to speak? Or does, or does anyone else have anything to add to this? If not, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve preliminary plan four dash one eight zero three one and TCP one dash zero zero two dash two zero two zero, along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item six.
Did Michael come back? Michael?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. My name is Thomas Burke, I'm with the Urban Design Section. The project before you is conceptual site plan CSP one-nine-zero-zero-eight, which includes type-one tree conservation plan TCP one dash zero zero one dash two zero two zero for Woodyard Station, and is listed as item six on your agenda. The applicant is seeking approval of this conceptual site plan for one-hundred-and-nineteen townhouses, forty-six multifamily dwelling units, a one-hundred-and-twelve-unit apartment housing for the elderly, one-thousand square feet of commercial retail uses, and a variance for the removal of seven specimen trees.
I have a, before you begin, can I ask a question, please?
Yes, sir.
So we had another CSP, well, it's the same one that we received in our package this morning, so does it differ than the one that we got last week?
Uh, it should not be different.
They just wanted to make sure we read it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it's, yeah, it's the same, it's both for Woodyard Station, the same number and everything.
Yeah, it's the same one, but I was just wondering. It was in this morning's package.
Yeah, we got two more staff.
Okay.
Because I read the earlier one.
Yeah, there have not been any changes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The, the site is located in the southern portion of Prince George's County in Planning Area eighty-one A, Council District nine. More specifically, the site is located on Woodyard Road, to the north of Woodyard Road, near its intersection with Branch Avenue in Clinton. The subject property, the subject property is located, shown here, is located in the MXT zone and is bounded to the north by vacant land in the MXT zone, single-family detached residential community in the R-eighty zone, to the west by vacant land in the MXT zone, and a church-school property in the R-eighty zone. And then to the south, to the south and east by commercial uses in the CSC zone, as well as a vacant lands in the MXT. Council Resolution, Council Resolution CR thirteen dash two zero one eight placed this property into the MXT zone, and it is subject to the development concepts in the central Branch Avenue Sector Plan, which envision the site as commercial mixed-use and residential medium-high density, set on traditional grid patterns. The site is also located within the military installation overlay zone and falls within the left runway conical surface area E, which establishes a maximum building height of two-hundred-and-thirty feet for this site. Building heights will be evaluated with the review of the detailed site plan. The aerial photo shows the pre-development conditions of the property, showing this site is fully wooded. The site is relatively flat with no regulated environmental features located on or near the property. The master plan right-of-way map shows the site connected to Woodyard Road, a master plan arterial road. This CSP shows the commercial area in red. The applicant is proposing one-thousand square feet of commercial space with this application. However, staff has conditioned this to be two-thousand-five-hundred square feet to meet the purposes of the MXT zone. The residential townhouse units are shown here in yellow. The multifamily and apartment for the, apartment housing for the elderly shown here in orange. The open space and tree preservation areas in green, and the, the circulation pattern in and through the community shown here in blue. The county code requires that the maximum number and type of dwelling units be established at CSP. However, the specifics of the townhouse development, access, and landscaping will be established through the required preliminary plan and DSP applications, which will govern their development. The property is subject to the provisions of the Woodland Wildlife Habitat Conservation Ordinance. A type-one tree conservation plan TCP one dash zero zero one dash two zero two zero was submitted with the CSP application, showing the areas of woodland removal, preservation, and reforestation. The preservation and reforestation areas are shown here and shaded in green. Additionally, the applicant is requesting a variance for the removal of eight specimen trees, identified on this plan in green and red, and the retention of a single specimen tree here, shown in blue. Staff's evaluation of this request can be found starting on page eighteen of the staff report, which recommends approval for removal of seven of the specimen trees, shown here in green, and denial for the removal of specimen tree number five, shown here in red. The recommendation from staff is based on the level of design available with this conceptual site plan. With that, the Urban Design Staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings of this report and approve conceptual site plan CSP one-nine-zero-zero-eight, type-one tree conservation plan TCP one dash zero zero one dash two zero two zero, a variance for the removal of seven specimen trees, and deny the removal of specimen tree number five. All for Woodyard Station and subject to the conditions contained in the staff report dated February twenty-sixth, 2020, and is revised by conditions to be provided by the applicant, of which staff has reviewed and are in full agreement. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Okay. Mr. Ha, are there any questions?
Just, just a quick request for staff. So I like slide ten, how it's in color. It's not in color online.
No, yeah, I apologize, this was a late, a late, a late edit to the.
Okay, yeah, to the extent that we, we can put stuff in color online, that would be helpful.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Hatcher.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, for the record, my name is Chris Hatcher, with the Law Firm of Lurch Early and Brewery here on behalf of the applicant, TAC Woodyard LLC. The applicant would like to first thank staff and the community. I think through the process, we've actually updated the conceptual site plan and some conceptual layouts to what is currently before you guys. With staff's input, we think it was a very collaborative process, which ultimately shows something that's more reflective of what was approved in, in the sector plan. With that being said, I'd like to submit just a few minor revisions to staff's, to the staff report into the record.
Okay, let's see what they are. And meanwhile, let me ask this, because I know this is for senior, there's a hundred-and-twelve-unit apartment for senior housing, which, which we have somehow, what is it called in the zoning ordinance? Because on the cover it says for the elderly. I'm just trying to understand.
Madam Chair, yeah, that is reflective of what the zoning ordinance.
Is elderly, it says elderly?
Yes.
Well, okay, so I have a new title, okay. Okay, that's okay. Thank you.
The new ordinance will use better terminology.
Thank you. Okay.
I have a clarification. You said they asked for removal of how many specimen trees?
They asked for the removal of eight, and we approve, we recommend approval of seven.
Minus the five, except the five.
Well, five and eight, though. Eight stays, doesn't it?
Eight stays and five stays, am I right? So it's real? So, yeah, but they're, yeah, they're not requesting, they're not requesting a removal of, of the, the tree identified here in blue. So they're requesting the removal of these trees here. The green trees, we're recommending approval of the removal, and the red, the one shown in red here, we are not.
So it's a total of seven?
A total of seven.
Seven, correct.
We are recommending approval for the removal of, yes.
Correct, they've requested eight, we're recommending.
No, 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 no.
No.
No, 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 no.
No, it's your.
It's a total of seven, you're.
My apologies, my apologies. I'm sorry, yes.
That was my confusion.
My, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, yes, it's a total of seven trees that are requesting the removal of. We are, we are recommending approval of six of those trees.
Okay, thank you.
Now we're on the same page.
Okay, thank you.
My apologies.
Okay, Mr. Hatcher.
And there are, there are eight total trees on the property, for which we are only requesting.
Okay. Let's go.
First, it's.
Let me do this, let me accept your proposed revisions to, to the, is it to the report? It's just to the findings and to the recommendations of conditions. We'll accept that into the record as applicant's exhibit number one. Okay.
First, it's finding ten F, it's just including a sentence, reflecting that the applicant is permitted to submit a variance application for the removal of specimen tree ST five during the course of the subsequent entitlements. It's generally something that we would be permitted to do by the zoning ordinance anyway, but we just wanted to make sure it was reflected in staff report.
So you're requesting to submit once again, okay?
Yes.
Okay, good luck with that, okay?
Um.
Next?
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Commissioner. The, the only other revision is to condition two, as opposed to it saying prior to acceptance. The preliminary plan has already been accepted.
Okay.
So we just want to change that to approval of the preliminary plan.
Okay, Mr. Burke?
Staff has reviewed these recommendations, and we, we agree.
Okay, thank you. That's it for the, for the, for the proposed revisions. Okay, what else you got?
With that, the applicant respectfully requests that the planning board adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report as, as updated by applicant's exhibit number one, and we're prepared to respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you. Okay, let me see. Are there any questions at this time? Ms. Camp, you signed up to speak? But you don't have to? Good answer, okay. Okay. Mr. Hatcher? Okay, was there anything else? Does the board have any questions? Was there anyone else who wished to speak, whose name I did not call or who did not sign in? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff in addition to the finding as revised in applicant exhibit number one and approve CSP dash one-nine-zero-zero-eight, TCP one dash zero zero one dash two zero two zero, as well as approve the variance to section two-five dash one-one-nine D for the removal of specimen trees one, two, three, four, six, and seven, as, along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report and is further revised by applicant exhibit number one.
Second.
We have a motion. And a second, is there any discussion?
Under discussion, for clarification from legal, in, in the finding ten F in applicant exhibit one, do we need to have that statement to allow the submission of the variance application if we're going to deny it right now?
We're not denying, I didn't approve it or deny it. It's just that they can submit a subsequent request for a variance.
Yeah, I don't think there's a problem with it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Item seven. Mr. Chandler, you're, you're here on behalf of the city of Hyattsville. Who's the attorney for the city of Hyattsville?
Skip Cornbrooks.
Who, who is it?
Skip Cornbrooks.
Okay, okay. Not present today?
Not present.
Okay, all right. So, as everyone gathers for item seven. As everyone gathers for item seven, I do want to do this, we, and I may need Ms. Cracker or someone to help me with this. We have a lot of letters that were submitted prior to the deadline of, 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 no, we have a lot of letters that were received prior to the deadline of twelve noon yesterday, which are already included in the record. Okay, we also have a lot of, we have several that have been submitted after the deadline of twelve noon yesterday, and, and within our discretion, we have the opportunity to accept them into the record or deny. I am going to accept them into the record, but I do want to make sure that they're, my, I have one from Julie. I just want to make sure I have the right ones that oppose the deadline. So I have Julie Wolf, and I have one from Maureen and John Vosmech, and Kay Schoolly, and Barb Bancroft, and Cara Vegas. Those are the ones that came in past the deadline. Is that it? Is that it? Or these other ones passed the deadline? Cliff Mayo, is that right? Okay, Cliff Mayo, Leslie Hale, and, yes, Leslie Hale, okay. Is that it for the ones that came in post the deadline? Okay.
Madam Chair, I do have one from Cat Shee or Shee. If you don't have, I'll make sure you get a copy of that one as well.
Okay. Okay, so this...
Listen.
Okay. Okay, so I don't know about that one. But it says, it says it's signed by Kay Schooly. That's the email, yeah. Okay, so it is, I said it's Kay, okay. All right, so we're going to accept these into the, these that were delivered past twelve noon into the record as opponents exhibit, we're going, we'll do it sequentially, okay? Opponents exhibit one through whatever. Okay, thank you. Okay, now, one of the things I want to mention at the outset is, and I guess that's why I asked, I need some clarification right at the front, because a lot of these letters ask for us to not take action or continue this matter today. So I wanted to address this right up front, because, as you know, state law determines the lifespan of a preliminary plan of subdivision application. So we have to hear the case within seventy days unless an extension is granted by the, a waiver is granted by the applicant. And so there's no such thing as an indefinite continuance. So what I wanted to find out is if a stay, that's why I wanted to know from your attorneys, because I'm looking at these cases, and if, was there a stay filed in court and granted by the court? Can someone tell me that? For the city...
There was not a stay granted by the circuit.
Okay, so if there, let me just say, so I'm told that there was, come on, Mr. Chandler, I'm told right now that there's been no stay granted by the, stay granted by the circuit court?
That is correct.
Okay, so if, I just have to tell you this, because if there's no stay granted by the circuit court, and if we take no action, then this application is automatically approved by operation of law.
Understood.
And I wanted to make sure that your attorneys explained that to you.
Understood.
That you did know that.
Yes.
Oh, so now, if you know that, and you have this letter from the city of Hyattsville asking us not to take action and to wait, then this thing, this plan would be automatically approved by operation of law, and I want to direct you to these conditions on page twenty-six and twenty-seven. So it would be automatically approved, there would be, let's look at condition number twenty-six, page twenty-six, condition number three. Development within the subject property shall be limited to uses that would generate no more than twenty-three or twenty-six p.m. peak hour trips. That condition would go out the window, be by operation of law. Condition number five regarding sidewalks on the front, along the frontages of Hamilton Street, Gallatin, and elsewhere, all of that goes out the window. There would be none of these conditions. The thing would be submitted without conditions, would be approved without conditions one through thirteen by operation of law. So you know that, and you still want us to not go forward and just have it approved as submitted?
Madam Chair, for the record, Jim Chandler, Assistant City Administrator at City of Hyattsville, we do recognize the position the board has put in. We believe it's incumbent upon the applicant to request that delay.
Okay, but we can't, but you knew, and it is, if they grant a waiver...
Yes, we understand.
But we can't make them, you know that, right?
We understand.
Okay, okay, so I just want to make sure that you know that, but even if we did, it cannot be indefinite by operation of law, because it's only a maximum of another seventy days.
There's no expectation in the city this is an indefinite continuation.
Okay, okay, so that's what I want to make sure that everyone is aware of, that by asking for that...
That is correct.
You're at risk for an approval as submitted.
We understand.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, okay, you can go forward. Mr. Severs.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, I am Thomas Severs, Senior Planner with Subdivision and Zoning Section. Item number seven on the agenda is the Preliminary Plan of Subdivision for McGruder Point 4-18001. The subject project proposes thirty lots, two parcels, and one out parcel for the development of fifteen townhomes and fifteen single-family detached dwelling units. The site is located in the northwestern part of Prince George's County, within Planning Area sixty-eight and Council District Two. More specifically, the site is located in the southwest quadrant of the intersection of Hamilton Street and Fortieth Avenue. The subject site is located in the one-family detached residential R-55 zone. The site is bounded on the north and east by R-55 zone properties, to the west by R-55 and O-S zone properties, and to the south by R-10 zoned property. The site is located within the city of Hyattsville municipal boundary. The overlay map shows that the subject site is within a development district overlay for the Gateway Arts District Sector Plan area. Specifically, the site is within traditional residential neighborhood character area. The aerial photograph shows that the site is currently improved with the former Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission Headquarters Building and associated parking lot. Surrounding uses include single-family homes to the north and east, McGruder Park to the west, and the top of the park apartments and single-family homes to the south. The site map shows that the topography on the site is generally level, but slopes to the north and to the east away from the central area of the property. The master plan right-of-way map shows the master plan collector roadway known as Hamilton Street adjacent to the west. The six critical intersections determined to be impacted by the development are shown by the numbered yellow boxes on this slide and are further described in detail in the staff report. Given the proposed development, it was found that all six intersections will operate at an acceptable level of service as found in finding seven of the technical staff report. The project was previously subject to a conceptual site plan CSP-18002. On June tenth, two thousand nineteen, the district council approved the CSP, which approved the rezoning of the southern parcel to the R-55 zone and allowed development of townhomes on the northern parcel. The CSP shows a seventy-two dwelling unit maximum and specifically a thirty-one unit maximum for the northern parcel of the subject subdivision. The proposed use exhibit shows a conceptual overlay of the current site and proposed lotting pattern for up to thirty-one lots. Green represents the single-family detached units, and blue represents the single-family attached units. The proposed detached units have been oriented toward the existing surrounding single-family detached development, while the proposed townhouse lots are oriented toward the existing multifamily development to the south. The preliminary plan of subdivision shows thirty lots, two parcels, and one out parcel outlined in red. The lots are oriented with access to public roads, and an internal alley serves as circulation through the site. The existing floodplain on the site constitutes the primary management area, which is highlighted in green on the southern parcel. Residential development is only proposed on the northern parcel at this time, and the southern parcel will be addressed by another preliminary plan of subdivision at a later date. Adequate public facilities, including water, sewer, fire, rescue, and police facilities, are available to serve the site. The applicant has provided an alternative layout, as previously seen in the proposed use exhibit, that includes thirty-one lots instead of thirty, while maintaining the same general layout and circulation pattern. The thirty-lot layout meets R-55 lot size requirements. However, the thirty-one lot layout is consistent with the CSP, and the conditions of the CSP require that conformance to the DDO standards and that additional bulk standard, standards development are to be determined at the time of detailed site plan. Finding consistency with the CSP density and the adequate public facilities will exist for thirty-one lots, staff recommends that thirty-one lots are approvable if found to meet the bulk requirements at the time of detailed site plan. The applicant has requested variation from section twenty-four, one-twenty-two A of the subdivision regulations to propose an alternate, an alternate location for the required ten-foot PUE rather than along the street frontage along the north side of Gallatin. The PUE is proposed along the front of the lots in which it avoids conflicts with other utilities. The proposed PUE can be seen highlighted in orange, and the gray area is an existing seven-foot Pepco easement. Staff recommends approval of this variation request as set forth in finding eleven of the technical staff report. Impact to the PMA is proposed on out parcel one, which totals one hundred and ten thousand six hundred and forty-five square feet. This impact is necessary to remove the existing parking lot hardscape and to install storm drain structures. Staff recommends approval of the impact, which is detailed on pages nineteen and twenty of the technical staff report. The subdivision and zoning staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings and approve preliminary plan of subdivision four-18001 McGruder Point and variation from section twenty-four dash one-twenty-two A, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. Staff understands the applicant proposes one minor change to the conditions, and staff is in agreement. This concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions of Mr. Severs at this time? Okay, let's, thank you for your presentation. Mr. Rivera, let's deal with, we have the request to hold this. Everybody knows that what happens if, that's approved automatically by operation of law. Call is yours in terms of the waiver.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Norman Rivera, representing Werline Properties. Next to me is Jonathan Werline, the owner of the applicant here. And next to Jonathan is Mr. Gingles, my esteemed colleague, who's working with me on this case with the city and may also address the continuance request. We heard what you said about the approvable ability of it, because tomorrow's the action day. My client wants to prefer, would prefer to go forward and wants to go forward. The report is here, we're here, the conditions are acceptable as written, and other than our brief presentation, we're ready to go forward.
Okay.
And there's no stay.
So we can't, we cannot stop you, so I just wanted to point that out. And also, the, and for everyone who's watching, without a stay from the court regarding the conceptual site plan, we cannot automatically, we cannot postpone this. So I just, or without the waiver, we are precluded, and it's in everyone's best interest that we not do that, because, as I said, it would be approved by operation of law in accordance with the state law with zero conditions. Right now, we have conditions that are very, very helpful to the development. Okay, so Mr. Rivera, please go forward, and then we'll hear from the other folks who have signed up, and then you can conclude.
Great, thank you. Again, for the record, Norman Rivera, I'll be brief. Slide eleven before you is the site as it existed probably last summer. The building has now been razed, torn down, demolished. So the building, the WSC building at headquarters is not there at all, so it is essentially a redeveloped site. The parking lot to the south, called out parcel one, is still a parking lot. And that's important, because it is just a large four-point-six acre parking lot. No stormwater management, no sediment erosion control, complete runoff into the parking planning bog to the south, McGruder Park to the west, and anywhere else, the water would run off. So at the end of the day, and this is the second phase, CSP prelim, DSP plat permits, it would be much better than it is today. The building and the lot had no environmental controls, just on that standpoint, and your staff in the report has agreed that the PMA impacts are appropriate to be approved, because without them, the existing condition would be there and would be terrible for the community and the environment. Now, going through the report, and I want to do this, because obviously you've heard that we're on appeal in the CSP. We had our hearing February twenty-sixth with the circuit court. Hopefully, that decision will come out soon, and hopefully, it will resolve a lot of the issues, which is really just the rezoning of the lower lot. So this is just for the upper lot, not, although it's technically part of the circuit court appeal, it was not rezoned. It's already R-55, and hence, we're proceeding with those thirty-one lots. The thirty-one lots, as Mr. Severs indicated, were shown on the certified CSP approved by the district council. There was discussion about how the density was achieved. Your staff in the report, in the first generation back in July of eighteen, and then again on the remand, reiterated the density was appropriate. They went through the justification. It's really, townhouses are deemed to be compatible, because there's R-10 apartments directed to the east. Those four, three white squares are R-10 apartments that could be developed at forty-eight units of the acre. The townhouses will be on the lower parcel, again, not subject to this site, but at the subject property where you see the blue, those are townhouses, so there'll be a transition from the townhouses to the lower, to the upper, and then we put all of our single-family detached, the green lots, which are directly across the street from all the other single-family detached units in the neighborhood. So the sector plan said strengthen the ability to have single-family housing in this area, and that's precisely what we're proposing. All single-family housing with a mix of attached and detached. And we purposely put the single-family detached against the other detached. And when you look at the thirty-one lot issue that Mr. Severs mentioned, the lot configuration Seaver fore is exactly as you saw two years ago, last year, and the district council approved. So that lot configuration has been static. I would just point out that even though two of those lots are a tad under five thousand square feet in that lot area, there's eleven existing single-family detached homes on the other side of Hamilton to the top of the drawing, abutting R-10. So it's very much compatible, and at the time of DSP, you'll see the architecture. We hired a local architect to design architecture commensurate with the area, this area of Hyattsville, which is the traditional neighborhood character area. So if I could just briefly go through, Madam Chair, the record, and I like the way the new staff reports are written. So if you look at page two of your report, the table of contents, I would just want to touch on a couple of things there. So the development data summary, again, the upper lot is what we're here for today. The lower lot is the parking lot that got rezoned R-55.
You lost me for a second. I'm looking at the table of contents, and what are you saying?
It says, like, one, development data summary...
Right, yeah.
Two, previous approvals. I'm just going to say briefly a couple of words about each of those aspects, because those are the findings that the staff does to support their conclusion and conditions. And again, we agree with those conclusions and conditions. But the, just very briefly, the previous approvals were the CSP eighteen oh oh two that you approved, the council approved, because the council had the final authority, and they approved the density with thirty-one lots on the top where we are, and the forty-one lots on the bottom, which will be a future plan, as Mr. Severs indicated. Community planning wrote several memos, the remand, they did another one, to further buttress the fact that this is context-sensitive infill development of medium density to promote again, single-family housing. Also, they pointed out there should be natural surveillance of units, and what we have on the upper lot is a design that has eyes on the street and eyes on the alley. Stormwater management was totally addressed with DPI. You might hear that later, but there's approved concept plan for the whole site, and that will be implemented after site plan, record plat, and then permit. So the whole site is a, under a concept plan approval, and when we dig up all the gravel, the pavement from the parking lot, we get redevelopment credits for the stormwater management, because again, it's barren with no environmental treatment at all. As to Parks and Recreation, there's a condition that addresses the fee of lieu that we'll be providing to the commission. Trails are all internal, there is no trail system required, but in terms of transportation, Werline Properties is going to improve the ride-on bus, the bus stops, which is one on Gallatin and one on, I just... the bus stops, which is one on Gallatin and one on, I just blanked out where it is. But there's two of them. But we're gonna make bus stops with rain protection and coverage as well as improve the metro stop. We're also gonna be providing if Capital Bike Share cooperates with us, a bike share program with the HOA so that each owner is automatically part of Bike Share. So we thought that was very important because there's two metro stations near here that are accessible by bike, the bus, and metro, walking, et cetera. Transportation, Mr. Lenhart's here. There's no API problem as to traffic. This is an infill development. The roads are sized adequately. Mr. Severs went through the critical intersections. There's no improvement necessary. Schools and public facilities, again, that's a test. We've met the test and we will pay those appropriate fees at the time of building permit. Use conversion is the issue of allowing townhouses in the R-55 zone for the upper lot, which again, Mr. Severs covered, the district council approved in the CSP. The PUE easement is not needed, and that's why we requested a variation. Thank you, Tom. The yellow indicates where it could have been, but because the utilities are already in the ground, there is no need for a PUE. Staff found that was appropriate to give us that variation and recommend approval, and we thank them for that. Historic, there are no issues. WSC building was never historic, and it has been razed. Environmental, I've discussed this several times. The site had no environmental protection. That's the PMA area technically, but once we're done with it, there'll be totally stormwater management, floodplain management. All those stuff will be addressed, but not at the time of preliminary plan of subdivision. That's a DEPI and permit issue. Urban design, that covers really the next step. The detailed site plan is where a lot of the city's concerns stem from. What does it look like? What's the view shed? What's the streets cave? How do you get eyes on the street? So you'll see that again. The DSP is upstairs or downstairs, ready for acceptance, and you'll see that soon. With that, that concludes our presentation.
Okay. Are there questions of Mr. Rivera at this time? Commissioner Duoner?
Yeah, so on this slide and the slide prior to that, between the, the lotting patterns on here, so I realize where the one lot is being kind of taken up or, or lost from because you're just changing the width of the, the actual lots themselves and sort of the top right of that pattern. One of the things that I was kind of wondering about is it looks weird in that corner where you've got like lots, 19 is fine with 17, 18, 19 in the top right corner, but then lots 20, 21, and 22. Have you tried to make those a little bit better so, so that corner wouldn't be kind of up in 22, maybe 21 would be down a slight bit? And you might need to adjust 20 to be kind of coming out. I don't know if you're doing that for garages or?
Yes, that's one of the reasons, sir. We can still look at that, but that is the only lot, the upper right lot at the intersection that has a direct driveway access to 41st Street, I think. So that's why it had that configuration. But we can certainly look at that at the time of DSP.
Yeah.
To improve that. Because at that time, you'll be able to see the driveway, the curb cut, the architecture of the rear, and maybe that'll help. But we can certainly look at that.
Yeah, because I, I don't like how it's laid out right now. It's problematic, especially, so I, I live in some townhomes sort of like this in Hyattsville, and we have issues with dump trucks and trash trucks getting in where the city actually won't provide services to us because our alleyway is not wide enough. So we, we can't get city services in there. And, and I want to make sure that that alleyway, even if it remains an alleyway and isn't technically a street, that it's wide enough for the existing services to get through there. And that might mean that you need to realign the lots to actually make them more flush with there so they're not sticking out and problematic. Because that's, that's a real-life concern that we're living with, and it's a total pain because we can't get city services from trash or recycling to go through in this area. And, and it's, it's a total mess. So I want to make sure that we don't have that problem with this, this subdivision.
Now, we appreciate that. And Mr. Chandler had mentioned that to us early on. That's why we're proposing these to be city alleys. So we're working together to make sure they're sized properly. That particular lot at the top right corner does not need access to the alley. The other ones, all the other ones do. But we did ensure that those are sized properly for emergency vehicles, trash, et cetera. And the city had also requested, and we agreed, to put a, a light at each of those turns. So coming in off Hamilton, there'll be a light to visibility. There'll be another light at the intersection to the top, you know, to the, further to the right, downward, um, right there. Thank you, Tom. And then one down at the bottom where it intersects with Gallatin. So we're gonna light it, and it's wide enough, and the city won't accept it unless it meets those standards that you mentioned.
Yeah.
But we're also gonna look at that lotting configuration.
Yeah, because it might just mean that you need to shave off like a half a foot or something on the back of 19, 18, and 17, just to kind of make them flush and kind of draw down the property line a little bit. I, I don't know how you want to reconfigure it, but right now, that's, that's gonna create problems.
Okay. I know people in other jobs in that area have tight, tight alleys, so.
Yeah. Yeah. And that, it, it's a mess.
Right.
Because we have those tight alleys that, that did not get conformance with the city plan, and it's a total mess right now.
Right. So that was something we discussed a long time ago. We're not gonna make that mistake.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Are there other questions at this time? Okay, Mr. Chandler. Hold on a second.
Before I forget, Madam Chair, condition 13 on page 27, Mr. Severs indicated that they agree with our slight revision.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Condition 13, page 27, Mr. Severs indicated that we requested a slight modification. Staff agreed. And there's language that would basically say in the third line, after approved preliminary subdivision, or as modified by the DSP.
I'm sorry, where are you? 13?
13, first paragraph. What it is, is there's HOA land, and at the time of preliminary plan, we think it's gonna be exactly that size.
I understand the rationale. Just tell me where you are.
Page 13, uh, page 27, number 13.
Okay, got it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Subdivision or as modified by the DSP.
Yes.
Mr. Severs?
Yes, ma'am, we are in agreement.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chandler?
Good morning again, Madam Chair. For the record, Jim Chandler, Assistant City Administrator.
Can you raise the microphone a little bit? Thank you.
And Director of Community Economic Development with the City of Hyattsville. I am here today representing the city of Hyattsville regarding the subject case. The city does advise the, the client to not proceed. And certainly, yes, we are in court. Yes, we expect an outcome rather shortly. And our advisement to the applicant was, why don't we just be a little patient for a couple of weeks and see whether or not some of these issues resolve themselves through the courts and adjudication? But obviously, we're here and we've proceeded.
But, well, we have to.
I, I understand.
And I'm looking at this language, you know, it says, despite the great opposition by the city, if we decide to proceed, we, we don't have a choice but to proceed.
I understand.
Okay.
But the applicant, the applicant would have the right to correct.
They do.
The city has two primary objections to the subdivision application. The first being the proposed stormwater management plan of the site, and the second being the density calculations used for the upper lot. The stormwater management concept plan submitted by the applicant includes the entire development. It proposes to construct six micro-retention facilities, one area for flood, floodplain compensatory storage. The subject property will hold two of the six micro-retention facilities and will have no stormwater outfall. The use of the lower parcel appears necessary for the upper parcel to be in stormwater The city wants to ensure that proper stormwater management occurs regardless of the development outcome on the lower lot, and recommends that the applicant be required to submit an amended stormwater concept plan, limited to the boundaries of the upper parcel, and not in any way reliant upon the compensatory storage of the lower parcel, limiting the applicant's ability to dispose of the individual parcels to new owners for separate distinct purposes or uses. The city's second major issue is the density calculation for the site. Parking planning staff report includes, concludes that PPS is consistent with the CSP approved as net density for the upper parcel is approximately 8.6 dwelling units per acre. The report also points out the footnote with the district council's decision indicating that the site shall have an overall density of 72 units. City does not find the use of net density appropriate in this circumstance as the approved CSP specified, specifically indicates separate density requirements for single-family detached and single-family attached homes of 6.7 and nine dwelling units per acre respectively. In addition to having two different unit types present on the site, the matter is further complicated by having a dwelling-type townhouse that is not consistent with the underlying zoning of R-55. Further, the footnote with the district council's decision is inherently contradictory to the district council's decision as the footnote calls for the net density calculation, but the body of the decision states a differentiation between the density calculation for the detached and attached units. In line with the district council's decision, the city believes the site should adhere to the maximum densities of single-family detached of nine dwelling units per acre and a maximum density for single-family detached is permitted in the R-55 zone at 6.7 dwelling units per acre. The densities for each unit type should be calculated separately to most accurately follow the requirements outlined in the approved CSP. In addition to the city's major concerns, we have included in our correspondence, the board, to the board, the city's request to include but not limited to eliminating Lot 26 from the application, reducing the number of the proposed single-family homes from 16 to 15. All lots shall meet the minimum lot size standard of 5,000 square feet. The applicant shall align the property borders of lots 21 and 22, and the property borders of lots 19 and 20 to allow for a more uniform lotting pattern. Commissioner Duoner pointed this out. I think it's fairly obvious to us. We understand the applicant may take this up at time of detailed site plan. We believe it's more appropriate to resolve this issue now. We are also requesting that the applicant eliminate or resolve the lotting of the townhouse units 11 and 12, which their front doors open up to the side of a residential unit, which struck us as quite odd. And so our request to the board was that to require all of the townhouse units open up until, to parcel A1 without obstruction. And we think this is a fairly reasonable condition. And certainly, the applicant can achieve this by widening the units, you know, if necessary, eliminating unit 11. But it's, it's an odd issue. Certainly, we understand the applicant is, is trying to place as many units on the lower parcel as possible, but it, it doesn't seem like really well-thought-out planning. And so we are asking for the board to consider a condition that resolves that, that conflict. In closing, we thank the board for its consideration. We recognize that this is a difficult case and certainly look forward to your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Do you have a, you, do you have another copy of your statement?
I can provide one, yes.
Okay, thank you.
No questions?
Commissioner Duoner?
So, Mr. Chandler, just on one of the last few comments on lots 11 and 12, why would that be a problem? So you guys have approved lots in my own neighborhood that, that open into the sides of, of townhomes. So I, and I understand that the entire upper parcel is not townhomes, but why would it be a problem opening up into the side of townhomes?
Well, just for clarification, I don't know that the city took a position with respect to the, the layout of the subdivisions for the previous application. With respect to this particular layout, we, we concluded some quick math to figure out that by, simply by widening those units, each of those units would be able to open up to a front and not walk out their front door and they're looking at the side of another unit.
Okay. I mean, I'm not terribly concerned about that. I, I bought a center unit because I didn't want to do that, but I have neighbors on both sides of me that, that occurs too.
Understood.
From, from my perspective, that, that's not a big issue, and it exists elsewhere in the city, but I'll let the applicant figure that out. So on, on the stormwater management, I do think that is, that is an issue that, that's concerning to me, depending on how this development goes through. Because I don't want to see this where all the stormwater management is pushed down onto the lower parcel, the out parcel, and then the upper parcel develops, the second, lower parcel develops in a different way, and then we create a variance for stormwater management into some other area within the watershed or something that's not even addressed in the lower parcel. I think that is a big concern of mine. Because I, I, I play on the playground that's right below the parcel. I know it floods. I know there's issues in that, that area. And I realize that any redevelopment of this, of both parcels together jointly would probably be a much better outcome for the stormwater runoff than, than exists now because just, it's a concrete asphalt lot. If the, we restrict the stormwater management to the upper parcel only, where does it go? So how, how could the applicant actually manage that? And where would it actually be as opposed to being on the lower parcel and, and being done there?
We would anticipate the applicant's civil engineer to figure that out.
Okay. So have you guys not made any proposals or talked to the applicant about that?
The applicant was present when we expressed this, this concern.
But, I mean, so that's different than actually trying to suggest places. And I realize you guys aren't civil engineers and it's not your project, and it's incumbent upon the applicant to figure those things out. But have you offered any areas that the stormwater management could be located on the upper, upper parcel that would at least partially, if not fully, address the city's concerns?
We did not specifically identify any property that they've.
Microphone, Mr. Chandler, please.
We did not specifically identify any property locations. They did introduce some micro-retention with, which I believe resolves some of the, the stormwater on the site. And that was one of our initial comments when we saw the, the initial concept is micro, or thought was micro-retention would be a more appropriate means for addressing stormwater than creating a stormwater retention pond, which is wildly out of character for, for infill development.
Okay. And then sort of playing this forward in a, in a what-if scenario. So what if this redevelops and, and all the stormwater retention is on the second parcel down there? They come in, they get a variance, and they somehow redevelop the whole bottom parcel into some other development. Is there anywhere in McGruder or nearby that you would be able to do stormwater management if the lot, if the bottom parcel were to redevelop out and not be the, the full sort of capture of the stormwater runoff?
I, I can't speculate. As you're, where McGruder Park sits a few feet above the water table, so there is, I believe, limited ability to manage stormwater within the footprint of the park.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Are there other questions of Mr. Chandler at this time? Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna go down the list here. Daniel Muth?
Hello, for the record, Daniel Muth.
I mess it up every time.
It's all good. 6118 43rd Avenue in Hyattsville. I'd first like to clarify one point that Mr. Rivera made. He claimed that the upper lot is not under review in any judicial manner right now. It is the, the rewriting of the table of uses of the R-55 to allow density in townhomes is also under review.
Thank you. Thank you for your opinion on that. I didn't, I was gonna turn to our council about that, but it, but the problem is there's still no stay.
Sure, sure. I understand that. I just thought I'd point that out. It's not just the lower lot that is under review. It's, it's the entire property.
Okay.
Okay. So, as stated, my name is Daniel Muth, and I'm here to express my concerns about 4-18001. I'm also a member of the group that filed for a judicial review of the district council resolution to approve the CSP over the planning board's decision to not recommend. I would also have been hugely instructional to these proceedings to have that judgment in hand, which is why we asked for a stay. Now, you've properly instructed us.
But you didn't ask for a stay, I thought.
Well, we were, we wrote the planning board. No, no, no. Like, it would have been great if we, we asked for a continuance. We, we, but we can't. We understand that now.
And you understand why.
Yeah, we understand, 100%. But I would remind the applicants that the last time they refused to grant an extension, it did not end up well for them.
It didn't well, end up well for anybody.
So, so that's going forward, but I would like to remind the board of the crux of our arguments currently under judicial review, that one, the district council's approval of townhomes and residential density in the nine units per acre for the subject properties was unlawful. And two, the district council's rezoning of one of the subject properties from OS to R-55 was also unlawful. The first of these is the most relevant to today's proceedings, but holistically, they need to be considered in tandem, mostly because of the stormwater issues we've just been talking about. I will not relitigate those arguments here, only to point out that they are now in the capable hands of Judge Woodard, who we hope to hear from very soon. Instead, I'm going to walk you through as a citizen who's fairly knowledgeable about some of the guiding documents of this county and how this particular project doesn't seem to line up with any of them. First, considering the environmental issues, I First, considering the environmental issues I observe in Prince George's County Green Infrastructure Master Plan, which describes itself as "the comprehensive vision for conserving significant environmental ecosystems in Prince George's County," and focuses on, quote, "conserving areas containing environmentally sensitive features such as streams, wetlands, buffers, the 100-year floodplain, and steep slopes." We're considering a parcel that intersects with all these natural features today. It's further been supplemented by continuing Resolution 7/2020 by the county council that passed earlier this month, which declares the intent of Prince George's County to establish a Climate Action Commission to develop a climate action plan. In its preamble, it specifically points out, quote, "whereas documented impacts of global warming includes increased occurrences of extreme events, i.e. droughts and floods," and expresses an interest in being more informed and proactive about these issues. This is supplemented further by Prince George's County's Plan 2035, which states, quote, "Achieving our vision requires that we do things differently. We must embrace a new way of thinking and acting for our county to realize its full potential. We, our leaders, residents, and stakeholders, must commit to developing sustainably, thinking holistically," and I think that one's important, "investing strategically, growing equitably, and preserving all that we value." And then goes on to say that we, quote, "should also include implementable actions for areas of high-risk flooding." It recommends locating infrastructure and development out of high-risk areas. Notably, this development seems to exhibit none of these values. It's not holistic. The second point I'd like to raise is that of education. I'm the chair of the Hyattsville Educational Facilities Task Force, help organize the Hyattsville Zombry Run, which raises tens of thousands for our local elementary school, middle school, and schools across North County, and have been active with the Prince George's County Chapter of Strong Schools Alliance, that has pushed for the Kerwin recommendations that will bring hundreds of millions of dollars into our local schools. My wife is president of the Hyattsville Elementary School. As you know, a new middle school is being considered in Hyattsville, and as a result of lack of planning, we have nowhere to put it. The school district briefly considered sitting it in the unused park and planning land next to McGruder Park, close to where this development is situated, but rightly rejected the idea, partially based on the absurdity of locating a school in the 100-year floodplain and environmentally sensitive regions. It is not congruent with the state of county's goals. Our kids will now likely have to be split up and bussed for years to various corners of Prince George's County while the school is demolished and rebuilt. And it blows my mind that a county can't seem to find the justification to ameliorate the burdens of our most vulnerable kids, but continually finds the justification, any justification, to placate developers in singular aims. This falls farcically short of the mandate for full holistic thinking put forth in the 2035 plan. Beyond this, the school's assessment in the TSR fails to mention that Hyattsville Elementary School is already at 140% capacity, in a building with systems that continually fail and bathrooms that don't reliably work that is in desperate need of a rebuild itself. And the only site identified by the school system as a possible location for that possible activity is the site we're talking about today.
So the site we're... I'm trying to follow your logic on the school.
Sure.
Okay, so I will take exception to that the county tries to placate developers and not the residents. I will take exception. We have laws that we have to follow, and that's what we're doing.
Sure, I understand that.
Number one.
Perhaps too strong.
Number two, there's a schools, you know, there is a schools surcharge now. We can't, you know, we can't make decisions based on APF for schools. So you're talking about Hyattsville Elementary. So that is a law that we have to follow. We enact no laws, but that is a law that we have to follow.
Sure.
And then you're saying that this is a perfect site for the school. Who owns the site?
I'm just saying that the school district has identified the site.
Okay.
Which is true.
We have to work, that may be, but we have to work with what's in our...
I understand.
Okay.
Thirdly, I'd just like to make a brief comment about equity and planning. Using the justification to zone a parcel R-55 because it's the zoning of the surrounding area, but then rewriting the rules that govern that particularly R-55 is not exactly honest. It's akin to allowing dogs in people's backyards, but then rewriting the definition of a dog on a particular property to include that of a cow. It's a dog because we say so, but anyone can see it's a cow. In this case, a spot zone and everything but name. A clever legal maneuvering, perhaps, but equally detrimental, and it diminishes the faith in the county's governing and zoning apparatus. What is an R-55? Is it a dog? Is it a pig? Or is it a cow? Through text amendments passed by the district council and by revisions to the Table of Uses by many of properties throughout Prince George's County, it's becoming increasingly difficult to tell. This not only reduces certainty for developers, but also diminishes the ability of the relevant sector and master plans to be relevant at all, and it further reduces what's allowed on a particular parcel to a consideration of whether a community has the resources and wherewithal to challenge these decisions in court. The vast majority of communities in Prince George's County do not. This makes planning something available only to a small group of people, rather than a vision meant to encourage equitable assignment of development in public facilities and infrastructure. In closing, again, we're not opposed to development in Hyattsville. We're not opposed to townhomes. By following the sector plan, we've shepherded density into West Hyattsville, Prince George's Plaza, the Route 1 corridor. There are more high-density projects in the pipeline proceeding without controversy, and add hundreds more apartments and townhomes, most of them more affordable than these. We've added more density than nearly any other community in Prince George's County over the last decade and have done so happily under the premise of smart transit-oriented communities. What we oppose is development that's cynical and ignores the sector plan and that diminishes the capacity of our already overburdened public facilities and space. Planning is a mechanism of social justice, and through a deliberate and inclusive process, this body provided that vision in 2004 and set an example of proactive, community-oriented planning looks like. These values have been reinforced again and again in the county's Green Infrastructure Master Plan, Plan 2035, and in value statements throughout the code, but they are only words if we don't live them. They are only cows masquerading as dogs, and they cease to become holistic. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Are there any questions of Mr. Muth?
Yes, good.
Okay, Muth, thank you. Okay, thank you. Victoria Boucher?
Boucher.
Boucher, you know, I'm not doing real well here today. Okay.
It's better than voucher, thank you.
Okay. Can you get close to the microphone, please?
Oh, yes.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name's Victoria Boucher, and I live on Gallatin Street, which is not too far, of course, from the proposed site. I'd just like to give an example, anecdotal, of course, of why it isn't a good idea to necessarily believe that Werline will honor promises.
That your what?
Honor promises. The promises aren't credible. I mean, there are a lot of seductive promises that have been coming into here, into play. I'm going to give you an example during the demolition of the WSSC building. Werline had agreed to have some sort of spray system so that the dust and grit from the demolition would be contained. I started, I was walking my dog in areas, trying to keep away from the demolition site, but even so, I would come home with grit in my hair and a hacking cough. I discovered that my neighbors had similar experiences, and apparently Werline was approached. They were told, well, they had discontinued the spraying because it wasn't cost-effective. And I think that's the general, the general attitude is that we will tell you whatever you want to hear, but we won't necessarily honor it if it isn't in our interest. It's sort of like, I'm old enough to remember an advertising campaign for Arpegue perfume. Promise her anything, but give her Arpegue. I think what we're getting doesn't smell as good as Arpegue. But I want to point out one other little thing that was pointed, that I saw in the Baltimore Sun on February 26th. FEMA just shelled out millions of dollars after a lengthy lawsuit with people whose homes were subject in Baltimore County and the Woodlawn area to periodic flooding. It was $1 million just to, just for demolition, and they gave them 75% of the fair market value. And of course, the court costs must have been really something. I'm wondering, who is going to pay the future homeowners of these houses on the floodplain? Because it's inevitable that they're going to be damaged. I mean, the ecological evidence is there, and I'm not even going into all the deer and other wildlife that are going to go into the homes that already exist because of the construction, because McGruder Park is right there. McGruder Park is right at...
And you move it back and forth from the microphone.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm not used to microphones.
That's okay.
It's going to happen, and Werline is not going to take responsibility, and the realtors aren't.
That is why we're going to have, that is why there has to be a stormwater management plan.
But the stormwater management plan, as it stands now, is ridiculous. And I, and even if they come up with a good one, I don't expect them to honor their promises. And that's my main concern, is I don't think you're dealing with ethical people. So I'm sorry, but that's my opinion.
Well, you're entitled to that, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
But we can't make the decisions about stormwater management. That's why we have those experts over there. But you can express your concerns to them also. Okay. I hope I get this one right. Teresa Imordino?
Perfect.
Thank you. Score one for me. Okay. Can you adjust the microphone for... Thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Good morning, everyone. I've been here before for the first hearing, and you guys were supportive, and I thought that was great.
Okay, just state your name and address for the record.
Okay.
Teresa Imordino.
Okay.
4112 Emerson Street.
Something happened to the mic. No, no, it's not, you had it right, something, it's not you.
No, it's not you.
Did you?
I think it's turned off. It has a green light.
Is that it?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, folks.
That's okay.
Anyway, 4112 Emerson Street, Hyattsville, Maryland. Is that...
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, let's see. I've been a person of record on the first hearing, too, and I know these two are kind of together because the water management plan is going to include the lower lot, not just, you know, and blah, blah. But as of now, I still have some of the same concerns I had on the first go-round. And the first one is the density of the project. There?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
Getting nervous. Okay. The traffic issues. I don't know if it really shows up here, but that's a very difficult intersection for people, little kids on bikes, dog walkers, bicycles, because there's five points of entry right there at McGruder. There's McGruder, there's Hamilton, there's the other street up there, then there's the... It's just five points of entry, and right now, it's actually a traffic calming area. So adding 160 more cars to a traffic calming area, not so great, I would think. But anyway, and then everybody's talked about the 100-year floodplain. And this lot was completely flooded in the hurricane of the '60s, Agnes, all the way up to the road. The river flooded the entire park, I'm sorry, and went up to the road. And yet, 40-something townhouses will be erected at that spot. Then the environmental issues. Clearly, this density on a known floodplain and a busy, and is busy, on a busy road is ill-advised and will cause multiple problems in the future, not to mention the thing she just talked about, the FEMA reimbursement of people for problems that happened. So, anyway, two years back, Hyattsville and this area of the county had 45 inches of rain. Forty-five, that is more than you get in a tropical climate. A lot of trees died from too much water, many fell over. And again, excuse me, to build on a place where you get flooding anyway and that kind of rain, which is no doubt coming again at some point, it just doesn't seem like a wise use, but whatever. So, but the thing that is more worrisome to me is the new plan, which uses the bottom lot to control the water on the upper lot. Okay, in order to do that, you will be taking our only playground. It is directly adjacent to the parking lot, and it will be demolished in order to create a stormwater basin. That is bad for our community. I'll tell you why. I live in a, one and a half blocks from the site. There are 20 children under seven on one block of houses. It's babyville. I call it babyville. I'm not involved in it, clearly, but it is babyville. It is babyville. And these moms, you know, there are a lot of stay-at-home moms, they're home during the day. You go down there any day, and you're going to see them walking down to that playground. They also have school groups going down there, they have playgroup dates. It's a very adorable little, I mean, it's a really nice park, and it's the only thing in the park that is, you know, for children and families to get together. So that's a big loss if they allow them to, instead of what they said in their original website was they were going to increase the playground area, now they're removing the playground area. That's a big change for our community, and that concerns me a lot. The other thing is, excuse me, oh, yeah, blah, blah, blah. And this is the other thing. Werlin Company, I'm not saying they do bad houses or they're ugly, they may not be my taste, but they're not ugly, and there they are. But they're planning on developing row houses and single-family homes that the starting price is $600,000. This is not affordable housing in any universe...
That's not something that we can entertain here.
Yeah, I know, but people are saying at other hearings, oh, it's affordable, it's not affordable housing. But anyway, the playground is central to the community. It's really a very big thing. And what the other people had raised the point, too, is if you're relying on this huge steep hill, and it really, if you've been out there, it's a really steep thing, that water floods that lot regularly, and then you're going to rely on it coming down the hill to get into the basin. I'm not an engineer by any stretch. Not a good, you know, and taking the playground. So diminishing the park space, taking our playground, and not really dealing with what's on the hill, which is what I think you really probably have to do. But that's my thing. Okay, so, anyway, because your board has been supportive of us in the past, I pray that you all can see the issues this will pose in the community and to our families. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you so very much. You have a question?
Who has a question?
Commissioner Dornar.
Oh, hi, you're a neighbor.
Yeah, I use the playground. So why is it that you think that the playground is going to be taken? I understand that the out parcel is adjacent to it and that that area floods, and I've been on the playground when it's been raining because I wanted to get some play in before it stormed. But my understanding hasn't been that it's necessarily going to be taken away. I know that the city has its own plans for potentially redeveloping the park and all sorts of other ideas, but for this particular parcel at hand, or this application at hand, what makes you think that the playground is going to be taken?
Can you zoom into it? Because I don't have a picture of, you know where the playground is.
Yeah, I know where it is.
It's right up against where those townhouses are going to be built. So if they're not going to, and somewhere in some, in some of the literature that I've read, I can't tell you exactly where, it was said that they would take, maybe the stormwater management, that they would take it and make a basin right there because that's adjacent to the townhomes, and that's where the water will be congregating. It may be the, engineering-wise, maybe it's the best way to do it, but what about the playground?
Okay. Yeah, I know that there was an issue in the initial case a year ago, whenever we were here, nine months ago, that there is, the property line, I think, was kind of in question of whether or not it was in the park. So I would like, Mr. Rivera, that you address that because I use the playground, and that is a concern because I actually, it's old, but it's nice, and I want to know whether or not it will be taken when you come back up and talk. So if you could just address that issue, that'd be great.
Could I say something else? The thing that I read, and it might not be true, and I can't remember where it was, said that what they were going to do was make a stormwater basin right there and then sell the thing back to the city. Now, I don't know where the heck that comes from, but that's what, I think Greg probably knows more.
Okay, we can have Mr. Rivera maybe address that.
Okay, but...
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Let's let Mr. Rivera address that, because I think he can get to the bottom, hopefully, of some of these issues. And something I didn't ask also about was the bike, not right now, I mean, you can do it when you come back up afterwards. Something else that I didn't mention before was the bike bridge. I know that this is... I know that this is off-site, but if we are going to, if people have been talking about transportation and getting through here, I know we have Capital Bike Share Proposal. The bike bridge that, that is in Magruder Park is in, could, could use some help. I mean, I know that's off-site technically, but I think the applicant should definitely consider making a proffer for that, or at least talk before you get back up here. Because if you are going to be doing a lot of construction in here, people are not going to necessarily be using their cars, you're trying to get them to the metro, that is a direct route to the metro through, through the bridge itself. So when you come back up, Mr. Rivera, if you could also address that and talk to your client, I think that would be a helpful proffer, potentially, as well. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. So, um, okay.
Is that it?
Thank you, Ms. Imordino.
Thank you.
And for somebody who says you're very nervous, I don't think so.
No?
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm shaking.
Okay.
Can staff just pinpoint, uh?
Microphone.
Can staff just pinpoint the playground?
Okay, but can we do that? I, I just want to get to our speakers first, okay, and then we can be ready for that. Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Okay, I see what you're doing.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a few slides I'd like to show.
Okay, so I need to, I need for you to come to the microphone and let us know what they are, because council has the right to, I, I need you to proffer what the slides show. So, because council has the right to, to object or not. And if you could raise the microphone a little bit, thank you. Okay.
Well, I have, I have a mixed media presentation. The slides that I have.
Just identify yourself first.
My name is Greg Smith. I, I live at 4204 Farragut Street in Hyattsville. I'll, I'll give you more identification.
That's fine.
When I testify. The slides I, I have include maps of the site.
I just want, Mr. Rivera, are you listening? Okay, okay, go ahead.
Include maps of the site, some of which are already in the record for the CSP. And they include some graphs that we generated to depict the, the true densities that result on the upper lot and on the entire parcel, the entire property. If we look at the true, if, if we actually define density according to the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Rather than what the council has done and what the applicant would like the council to have done.
Okay, that's fine. I don't, I, I don't know whether there's objection or not, but it sounds reasonable. Mr. Rivera? Okay, all right, so.
So I've given Mr. Severs a thumb drive with a few slides, and then I've got some, some printouts. I'm happy to show them, Mr. Rivera, as well.
I need you really closer to the microphone, I can hardly.
Oh, I'm sorry. You really want to hear what I have to say? That's wonderful.
I really do want to hear what I have to say.
So I, I need to get my laptop, because of course I haven't printed out all of my testimony. But I also have some printouts that I'm, I'm happy to share with Mr. Rivera, he can look at.
So the print, oh, the printouts are the same thing?
Some are, some are, go beyond that, yeah.
Some of the printouts go beyond what's on the PowerPoint?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so are you trying to submit that into the record as well?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't you get those?
Okay.
Mr. Cosby? How many do you have? Do you have copies for the board members?
I, I only probably have two or three sets total with me today.
Okay, so, so if we can, if I can have one appear, and then Mr. Rivera gets to see one as well, and then, actually, and our legal counsel, how about that?
I don't think I have enough for everybody.
I thought you said three.
Uh, I, let me check, I'm sorry. Excuse me?
How many, do, do you know how many copies, how many sets you have? It's not three?
I'm not that well organized, I'm sorry. How, how would you like to handle this?
But you, but you said, you thought you had three cop, three sets. I'm, I'm just trying to clarify, or you do not have three.
I was, I was organizing them while I was sitting over there, I'm sorry.
So they're not organized yet, as I was just, I'm trying to understand, they're not yet organized, is that what it is?
I have one set organized.
Okay, give your one set to Mr. Rivera, okay, for him to look at first.
Good morning, Smith.
Okay. Okay, and then, and so we, so we won't submit that into the record right now, just, just go forward with your PowerPoint, okay? Mr. Smith? Mr. Rivera, you can sit down and take a look at that. We're going to move this along. So what, what we're looking at now, Mr. Severs, is, is this part of his?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay.
I'll get to that as I, as I go through my testimony.
Okay.
So, so good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners Dorner, Geraldo, and Washington. I'm Greg Smith, as I said. I reside at 4204 Farragut Street in Hyattsville, which is near the upper and lower WSSC parcels. I serve as a board member along with, with Dan Muth of Sustainable Hyattsville. And I've, we've testified as members of Sustainable Hyattsville at past hearings, before this board and before the, the district council. We're an all-volunteer nonprofit, and along with Preservation Maryland and 21 Hyattsville residents, including me, we're challenging the district council's unlawful decision to approve Worline's concept, conceptual site plan, CSP 18002. And that, of course, is the parent case for a preliminary plan of subdivision 41008. So I will address some of the points that we made in our case, because they are relevant to this discussion. We agreed, of course, with the planning board's decision on March 14th of last year, that you could not recommend rezoning the lower parcel. In fact, your vote on whether it was on whether or not to accept the CSP itself, to approve the CSP itself and adopt the staff's recommendations, you voted two to two, which constitutes the denial. And I can't speak for Mr. Geraldo, but he had had, he was skeptical of the plan at the first hearing. So there's a chance we would have gone three to two on that. I don't want to presume there, but that is the case. And this has been a long process. It's had a lot of procedural errors in it, and a lot of factual errors presented. In addition to participating in this case before you and the district council, and now petitioning in the court, in July of 2019, Dan, Dan Muth and I filed a written complaint with the Prince George County Department of Permitting, Licensing, Permitting Inspection Enforcement, that Worline had begun demolishing the, the historic WSSC building despite not having a valid permit at the time. We filed a request for related records to prove that fact, and ultimately, Director Bowling confirmed that in fact Worline's permit to destroy the building had expired. What she didn't say was it expired 10 and a half months prior. And the reason we're concerned about this is not only because Worline violated the law there, but because Deepi brought no true enforcement action. And Deepi wasn't on, on top of the case. And Deepi is the agency that we're asked to, to trust, that they, in the approval of the stormwater management plans and other critical permits. This gives us serious pause, and I would hope it would give you some concern, because throughout the proceedings on the CSP, and now in this proceeding, critical issues got kicked down the road, or shunted to the side. Including this proof of, of Worline's willingness and ability to manage the stormwater properly on the site. That was a critical issue. A hundred people wrote to the record, raising their concerns about that, and about the impacts on the floodplain and on the park. And yet, we were told, no, that happens at another time, in another place. We're not going to discuss it because the planning board doesn't approve the permits. But those permits are integral to this project and, and its ability to proceed through, through the pipeline. And here we are again. Here we are again, with the same issues showing up. And when Worline, when Mr. Rivera was before our city council on February 3rd, and asked, well, how are you going to manage the stormwater? If for some reason you're not able to proceed with developing a lower parcel, because so much of your management plan relies on dumping the stormwater from the upper parcel to the lower parcel. Said, well, he did, first he didn't want to answer the question, and then he said, well, we have a plan in place. But where's the plan? If that's their plan, it should be in front of you. And the fact that it's not should be grounds to deny this, this application. It's one of the grounds on which to deny this application. So I respectfully request that you deny Worline's current preliminary plan of subdivision. And if Worline wishes to pursue the project, that you require Worline to file an entirely new preliminary plan. One that presents complete, accurate, and up-to-date information, and that fully complies with the zoning ordinance and all other applicable laws, policies, and plans. And those plans would include Plan 2035, the Gateway Arts Intersector Plan, and several functional master plans that are directly relevant. Those would include the master plan for parks and open space, the green infrastructure plan, and the resource conservation plan. And one of the concerns I've had all along in this process is, especially on Worline's side, but partially, I think, on staff's side or the district council's side, is they cherry pick their way through the plans and the policies and the goals and the standards, attempting to justify a project that just is, can't be justified. So I call their statements of justification, statements of attempt to justify. They always fall short on presenting, presentations of fact and analysis. I also request that you deny Worline's request for a variance of the, of the public utility easement. They've demonstrated no unique or particular hardship despite staff's claim, and that's one of the critical conditions of granting that variance. In fact, on February 3rd, Mr. Rivera testified before the Hyattsville City Council, under questioning, that the, that the easement would pose no particular hardship. He essentially said, well, that's just the way it's done. But he acknowledged that there was no specific, unique hardship in this case. And that is, that is one of the mandatory conditions in granting a variance like this. And we did ask that you postpone action on this case, because we thought it was in your interest and the public's interest to do it. But here we are, once again, as we were in July of, top 2018, living under the tyranny of the 70-day rule. Right? It doesn't matter how flawed the process has been, it doesn't have, matter how little opportunity the public has had to review the record and give you informed comments, 70 days' rules. And that's absurd. It's especially absurd in this case, because on the CSP, one reason the staff report was released late, we were all put into that terrible situation on July 26th, was Worline filed a legally defective amended application 55 days into the process. And then insisted that you hear on, the, the case on July 26th, because it would be so unpredictable to have the case fall into the, the autumn schedule. The, the decisions are always made to their convenience, until somebody puts a hard stop in front of them. And there was no getting around that hard stop, once this case went to the district council. But we raised that issue, nobody else. They also inconvenienced themselves by failing to file the state-required business ethics affidavits. And based on that, the council was forced to continue its hearing twice. Nobody else found that. We dug through the record and said, hey, look, this is legally required, it's not there. And so each time, on the day of the hearing, the council postponed. So I'll move past that. We, in our letter to you, in, in asking you to postpone this, we raised the fact that there were several impediments to public participation. One was the fact that, that the planning board's own notice to the public mischaracterized the plan. It gave the numbers for the entire plan, rather than the upper parcel. It failed to give the address of the proposed project. When you look at the, at the planning department's development activity monitoring system, what you'll see, and even this morning, if you go to that and you search for this case, you will see a statement that there are no relevant documents exist. And we know that's not true, because when we, having been through the system before, we learned that, well, staff maintains a Dropbox. So we asked for access to, to those files. Dave Simon, who I understand is no longer with the department all of a sudden, gave us the access. And what do we find? We find nine folders with 104 files, none of which are named in a, in a way that a layperson would understand. And then when we cobble them together, we find that, well, there's a lot of redundant file names here, but they've got different sizes. So a person would have to open each file to understand what it is, and then have to look at each one of those.
Mr. Smith, let me stop you for a second, because you're wandering too far from the microphone.
I'm sorry.
Okay. And also, so you're talking about dams right now, right?
I'm talking about dams, you know, we run, but we run into the same problem, if, if you look at, there's a lot of permits that are relevant to this approval, right?
Okay.
And to the overall approval for the project to go forward, including the stormwater management concept plan, which you were told all along, oh, it's in the works, and it's in the works. It wasn't approved until after you held your, your remand hearing. But we're all met, we're all, we were denied that information, you were denied that information, and that is, that's just one instance of that kind of problem here. But you run into the same problem if you use the permit tracking system on the planning department's website. If you search for permits under this address, the only permit you will find listed there is the fine grading permit. Nothing else, not the demolition permit, not the stormwater management plan, none of those are listed there.
Okay, so we're going to have our planning department, and Ms. Checkley and, and Mr. Boulage will be ready to address that.
And some of these are new issues, and we raised them in writing to you on July 25th of 2018, we raised them in the hearing on the 26th. So we understand that resources can be slim, and everybody's got huge mandates, but this gets in the way of the public's rights. And it gives, and it gets in the way of your right and your responsibility to get informed comment. And, and it just cripples the process. Nothing about this process has been normal. If you look at the normal order of approvals in the code, it goes like this, and you know this probably better than I do. Zoning, conceptual site plan, PPS, DSP. Using a process that short-circuits all of that, and applying watered-down standards, Worline convinced the district council to jam the zoning decision into the CSP, and the use decision, and the density decision. And then you now have before you a PPS that Worline now says, and the staff says in a report, well, in order to make this PPS work, we're going to go to the DSP, figure out what the standards are, and then retroactively apply them to this site plan. That makes no sense at all. And throughout the citizen handbook, throughout the code, the preamble to every, every one of these, every one of these articles is to provide for an orderly process, an easy-to-understand process. And I got to tell you, I've been through regulatory processes before, I've fought highways, I've fought incinerators, I've fought landfills. This is one of the weirder ones I've seen. And I remember Jim Chandler saying in this, in the June of 2018, one of the city councilmen asked him, well, is this normal? He said, nothing about this process is normal. So moving on, again, every, at every stage where we've raised critical issues about the floodplain, about what's the real size of the property, about what's the true density, it's, the issue is always sidelined most of the time, or kicked down the road for a later stage. And I, I don't know, but I think they're hoping that by the time we're at that stage, it's just too late to, to make a thoughtful, informed decision, for you to make that decision, or for the district council.
So, so Mr. Smith, let me stop you for a second, because I'm, I'm trying to, you, you're making a lot of points, and, you know, our planning staff will address one.
Sure.
Regarding what's listed and not listed in dams. We did have the, the staff report. What I do want to know is, you, you talked about the density and, and how your exhibit is going to show the, the quote-unquote "real" density versus the density that they're proposing.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's what you said, and I'd like to, I'd like to get to that, so we can understand that. And, and also.
I can skip forward to that, and, and then swing back to some of my other points.
Okay, I just want, I just want to make sure I'm following.
So let, yeah, I got you.
The issues that we can address here, because you, you know, a lot of your frustration is with the text amendment and, 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 and the council's decision, but we now have to abide by that. So I just want to, uh.
Right.
And I, and I understand there's a good measure of frustration, and I understand why there's a good measure of frustration. And part of it emanates from the, the state law 70-day rule, that we're, we're stuck with that. And you know, and I know you know that, but, so.
No, well, I, actually, I'm, I'm offering these points, these procedural points, and then I'll offer some substantive points to frame, because they segue into the points that I, I think you're going to feel are mostly directly relevant to this PPS. So we didn't undertake litigation lightly. But it was sad to us, and we launched into this whole process, and we consulted people who knew the zoning process, including attorneys in Prince George County. They said, good luck. Almost nobody gets a favorable decision except the developers out of the planning board, or out of the district council. And we said, well, that's sad. They said, really, what you're doing is you're building the record to sue the district council. council, ultimately." And honestly, we thought you gave us, you gave us some thought, and ultimately, you came back and said, "We cannot recommend rezoning." And you were right. You said that seven times in your resolution. The district council ignored that. But getting to some of this, the council made three decisions, as you know. They, and some of these decisions, these decisions are linked. They decided they unlawfully approved the rezoning of the lower parcel. They unlawfully approved townhouses in the R-55 in the TRN, and they unlawfully approved a density of nine units per acre in the R-55. That decision was unlawful on two substantive points. First of all, it exceeds the density that's allowed in the underlying zone, which the code prohibits, explicitly prohibits. And they base their calculation on a method, they base it on gross acres, and the code is explicit. Density is defined by the number of units per net lot area, period. That's not debatable. But that error has propagated through the staff memos, and through the district council's memos, and through Worline's memos. They relied on being able to smear 72 units over 8.26 acres. So we're going to, so we're going to drill into the density issue, let's do, and I'll just say two other things. They failed to meet the verdict of proof required by law in the zoning code for the zoning ordinance, and it should apply here, too. They failed to properly amend their application, despite having a clear opportunity to do so, after you initially approved the rezoning. They chose not to. And then they came back to you and asked you to reconsider the case, which you had no authority to do. At each step, they tried to rehabilitate their position. So getting into the density question, and this is where it gets kind of, this is where we have the printouts, and this is where some of these maps. This is, this is, the graphic that's projected now is, was presented by Worline in one form during their testimony. And what it shows you is how densely they plan to pack 41 townhouses on 2.86 acres. And you can, we've run the numbers lots of different ways, but ultimately, if you follow the code, and net lot area is defined as the gross area minus any, any land in the floodplain, and minus any public ways and easements, you get a density on the order of 18 or 19 units per acre on that parcel. The second piece of it is what you're seeing outlined in green is the land that Worline has offered to sell to the city. Now, so they can't credibly count that in their density calculation, and yet on February 3rd, Mr. Rivera acknowledged, under questioning by our council, that that's exactly what they were doing. They were counting that 1.8 acres that they want us to buy, a third of which they don't own, to the city. What he did not want to answer that night was whether or not Worline also planned to put their storm water management facility on that 1.8 acres. They do. We said this all along, that's the only place they can put it. And after that February 3rd hearing, at which our mayor felt like, felt like she had to rebuke Mr. Rivera for coming before the council once more and refusing to answer questions in a straightforward way, then our council sent Mr. Worline some questions. And my reading of his answer was, essentially, yeah, that he acknowledged that's where they planned to put their compensatory mitigation, in that belly of the, of the offering. But in his opinion, it wouldn't interfere with the public's use of that open space. Now, the entire, a huge part of the approval by the council of this CSP was on the, on the false premise that selling that land to the city would meet the intent of the sector plan. The intent of the sector plan was four acres being added to McGruder Park, not 1.8 and not 1.25. Why do I say 1.25? Commissioner Dorner, that playground you love, and you use, and a bunch of us love, and love to see kids using, is on what's called the Clover Street easement. That's a .55-acre parcel that's outside of the fence line, it's not paved, it's been used and maintained by the, by the city as a park for decades. Neither Jamal, Jamal WSSC LLC never paid taxes on that land. So the true area of that parcel is either 3.98 acres or 4.1 acre. The tax record and the sector plan say 3.98. Worline surveys and the Ds and your subdivision office say 4.1. None of them say 4.6. So, and that, that point is also relevant to the upper parcel, because the tax records say that the area of the upper parcel is 3.19 acres, not .3.6. I'm not a land use attorney, I'm not a Ds attorney. My plain reading of that fact is, they own 3.19 acres, and that's what they can count in their density. But that's not how they approach it. So getting to the density, we raised, this is one of the key points in our argument to the court, that the district council's decision was fundamentally unlawful, because the district council failed to clearly define how it was characterizing density, toggled back and forth between gross, and not saying anything. The law is clear, it's net lot area. So that's why, and that's why the city began to, and the council set, as you know, two density standards, without defining whether it was net or gross. They set 6.7 for the detached, which is the R-55 maximum, and that's the highest they can set in an R-55. And they set nine gross, gross units per acre for the townhouses. The problem is, when you start looking at the numbers closely, the densities that result from packing that many townhouses on a parcel of land that size radically exceeds 6.7, and radically exceeds nine. The city came up with, on the order of 13 or so, but we allocated it a different way, we came up with 15 point, I think 15.3. So if you could flip to the next slide, please. So this is a depiction of one thing I just described. This is in the record. Maureen Vosmick created this for you all and presented it to you all, and it shows what we were talking about. That you see, you can see that strip of land that runs diagonally, that's the Clover Street easement, that's where the playground is. Worline plays, plans to take that playground, sell to the city, land that the city already owns, build its main storm water and compensatory mitigation facility on that same land, and sell it to the city for the city to maintain. And relying on the de minimis standard, a 10-year storm event. We all know 10-year, the 10-year storm event is no longer a 10-year storm event. All we have to do is read the news. We can read scientific articles, too, if we want, but that's also implied in Plan 2035, where, in your section where you talk about forest and climate. The fact that climate change is happening, it's accelerating, our precipitation regimes are shifting radically, we're getting more frequent severe storms and more severe severe storms, and this planning does not reflect that. And you know the old adage, failing the plan is planning to fail. So that's what that depicts. Can you flip to the next slide? Okay, this is, this is a calculation of...
Can we, can we go back to that slide for a second? So, Mr. Rivera, I'm just going to make sure you're ready to address. Okay, go ahead. Thank you. Okay, okay. Now we can go back, we can scroll forward now.
Yeah, so this is an easy one, it's less problematic, but what we show is that, I actually need to pull that slide up in front of me. What you can see is that what Worline proposes for the upper parcel, even for the detached housing, is slightly higher than 6.7.
So what's the one in the middle?
That's, I think the city recommended eliminating one of the single-family homes, and so that's a city's...
A city memo, I couldn't see what that word was.
Clearly, the green one, yeah, I'm sorry. Next slide. This slide has a different calculus involved in it. I actually can't read the header on that slide, may I do that bad?
It's not just me, okay. It says, Townhouse Density from City Memo.
Yeah, so that assumes 3.6 gross acres, which we disagree with, and it assumes the areas and the density that the, that the city assigned its memo based on its conversations with your staff about how to allocate the pieces of that 3.6. And then, and then it subtracts .1 acre, because that is half of the 3.36 acres that Worline says will be the area of the alley. You have to subtract that to comply with the law in calculating your density. And it drives, it drives the figures ever higher. Next. The main point here, it radically exceeds .6, 6.7, it radically exceeds nine. I can't read that one either.
Detached density per tax records?
Yes, per tax record, that is just, that's the 3.19 acre rather than 3.6. And it, and it, it adds up all the townhouse parcels and adds a1, and it gives you a different density. But again, higher than 6.7, higher than nine.
Okay.
And roughly the same here. We're making the same point over and over again, slicing the numbers slightly, but the bottom line here is, they're calculating density in an illegal way, and it's unlawful. And on that basis alone, honestly, you should deny this application, and tell them to come back with an application that conforms, period. Also, on the, based on the fact that they say they can manage all the storm water from the upper parcel on the upper parcel, but they've shown, as far as I know, they've shown you no plan. That was new, because our district council, I mean, our city council members said, "Okay, what if the lower parcel doesn't go forward? What if you can't build there? What are you going to do?" And Mr. Rivera said, "Oh, we have an interim plan in place." And I think Mr. Worline might have said something similar in his response to our council. But there's no plan in front of you to review, or for Deephy to review, or for us to comment on. On that, on that ground, you should deny. Also, you know, again, it was 104 files with names we couldn't understand. I couldn't think through all of them, but I'll tell you what, I looked at the, I look at the application form, and it's legally defective. It's obsolete. It still lists Jamal as the owner. He's not. He hasn't been since July of 2015. Rather than accept that application, the director should have rejected it and said, "Come back and file a timely, legally sufficient application." It also doesn't name all the parties that have at least a 5% interest in the property. And that was a problem with the CSPs, too. They didn't sign it, they didn't name themselves, they didn't date it. That's required by law, it's not optional. And we pointed that out, and the district council blew right through it. The same is true if you look at the PPS itself, the big graphical things that I have to squint at on my laptop. They still name Jamal as the owner. He's not, he hasn't been for a while. So, so again, tell them to come back with a legally, a legally sufficient application. Don't keep passing the same, the same obsolete documents through and saying there's no problem. I could go into more detail about the problems with it, but I think the time is short. I like to respond to, so, again, 1.25 acres is not four. And as you're looking at zoning decisions, as you're looking at CSP, also here, you have to make a finding as to whether or not it complies with the general plan, the sector plan, and the applicable functional, functional master plans. And there is no way anybody can make the case that adding 1.25 acres with a storm water pond on it meets the, doesn't, meets the goals and policies that are laid out in all those documents, as well as adding four acres and reforesting part of it and restoring natural floodplain function. There is no way to look at those facts and come up with that finding. So, Dr. Muth referred to the visionary language in the plan, where you talked about looking forward, taking, looking at what's good for the whole and not just the parts, thinking holistically, and I agree. And what we're finding here is an application that doesn't even meet the de minimis standards. And the code says, the provisions out here define the minimum standard. They're not even meeting that. On that ground alone, you should deny this application. So, and I, whether I mentioned it, it's my understanding that the applicant, Worline, was required to mail notice to all parties of record. I received a notice, but what I saw in their mailing affidavit was they listed only about 100 people, I think. We know of at least 105 individuals who opposed the CSP, who should have received mailings, and we know of some, some folks who did not. I assume that they were among those parties of record who should have been notified about this proceeding. They weren't. It's not our job to do their job for them. I'd like to address some points in the TSR, if I may. I know I'm running long, but I also know if I don't put it on the record, it's not in the record.
Yeah, put it on, put it on the record, but I'm going to ask that you try to be succinct and not duplicative, just because otherwise, we have to break for a little bit.
I got you. On page one, you know, again, this is the kind of thing where if we can't get the basic facts right, we're in trouble. On page one, it characterized the site as being...
Page one of the staff report?
Page one of the TSR. It says, "The subject property is located in the southwest quadrant of the intersection of Hamilton and 40th." That's incorrect. The entire property is east of that intersection, and the, and the upper parcel is directly east, and the lower parcel is southeast. Cardinal directions. It states that the property exists with 8.26 acres. I just explained how that's not true. Worline is claiming land that Jamal never paid taxes on, never maintained, never owned. And yet, that's how they're able to cobble together 8.26, to then misconstrue the, the law for defining density, and somehow come up with a magic number of nine. It's nonsense. It says that they plan to apply for, to seek amendments to the standard lot size in the DSP, so they can come back and retroactively make this work? There's nothing orderly about that, and it's inappropriate. And other staff have said that, you know, actually, they should probably be considering the DSP first, because otherwise, we don't have a standard against ones to judge these lot sizes and make it work. And we're going to say, the law does not allow a density that's any higher than is provided in the, in the, in the underlying zone. And that density is 6.7, it's not nine. So you change the lot size, and you got a higher density. It says, "An amendment to DDO use table was also approved in the CSP to allow townhouses development on the subject site, including applicable density." You know what? If you read the council's decision, that's not explicitly stated as a finding. They just say amend the table of uses. They don't say how. It was just sloppy work, and that's one reason we're in court. It's inferred, and it shouldn't be. It should be clear, so the public understands what's going on. The staff correctly notes that the entire property is in the R-55, the upper parcel is at least in the R-55. That's true. An R-55 allows 6.7 units per acre, and requires 6,500-square-foot lot sizes. It doesn't allow for anything else, period. It says that they ought to make a finding on conformance, while this council, that said that, "The preliminary plan of final plan shall conform to the area master plan, including maps and text, unless the planning board finds that events have occurred, or the district council has not imposed a recommended zoning." The district council didn't, did impose a recommended zoning, open space in 2004. They then came back and unlawfully changed that decision. And I can give you the grounds, the reasons that that was an unlawful decision, but I'll spare you that. Storm water management, again. Worline now says that they can handle all the storm water from the upper parcel on the upper parcel. Where's the showing? It's not before you, it's not before us, it's not before Deephy, as far as I know. We haven't seen anything in record that reflects that. Page eight, "Staff recommends, per the master plan, if the avenue provides standard sidewalks along the frontages of Hamilton and Gallatin, wide sidewalks are recommended where feasible." Well, my question here is, have those sidewalks been provided in this plan? And if they have, shouldn't they, aren't they public ways? And if they're public ways, shouldn't they be subtracted from the, from the gross area to give you a net lot area? And doesn't that drive up the density even higher? If so, then on that ground, you should deny this, this application. Again, Worline, throughout this process, Worline has sought to toggle back and forth at its convenience. One day, we're talking about the whole... One day, we're talking about the whole project because that's what they want and that's how they make 72 divided by eight equal nine. Then when they came before the district council before, he said, you know what? The only issue here is rezoning. They wanted you to ignore the fact, no, the other two major issues were townhouses and density. Now, they say, well, we only want to talk about the upper parcel. That's all we want to talk about. And those are the only impacts we want to talk about too, whether it comes to schools or traffic or the environment. That's the only thing they want to talk about. It's very convenient for them, except that the approval of the parent application, the CSP, hinged on what they allegedly were going to do on the lower parcel. You know, on that ground alone, this is specious and you should deny the application. Dan has already spoken to our school overcrowding, use conversion. I'm not even sure what the staff meant by that. I don't know how they can change their use unless they change the mix on the upper parcel, the approved mix. Again, I talked about the conditions for the easement. Staff said that the surrounding topography and other conditions would make, denying the variance a hardship. Well, the surrounding conditions are pretty close to what, on the site, are pretty close to the surrounding conditions in the rest of the neighborhood. Steep slopes in some cases. And so, if, there's no grounds there.
Okay, Mr. Smith, tell me where we are.
I think I've covered a lot of points. You could go down through each one of these functional master plans in Plan 2035 and see how this plan conflicts with the goals and policies. Unless you want to cherry pick and ignore the facts. And unless you want to ignore the law. And that's been a problem throughout this. And we were thankful that on-
This board has not ignored the law at all.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I'm sorry. It's just that, you know, we thought you made the right decision on March 14th because that was the only decision you could make, based on the record and the law. I think I'll leave it there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let me do this for a second. Thank you. I'm going to see if there are any questions, but I'm going, so we're up to exhibit eight, right? I was asking you, because I asked you before about all the letters. I said we were numbering from one through, the ones we entered into the record today, and you were going to, she did one A through G. So then this would be what? So the PowerPoint would be two. And then this one, which is slightly different from the PowerPoint, would be opponent's exhibit three. Is that, okay?
And then, and Charles-
Hold on a sec. And so be accepted into the record as identified, okay? Yes? And same with the PowerPoint, yes?
I want to express some concern, and this is a holdover from the CSP process where we know of individuals and nonprofits who sent letters to the planning board in a timely way. In some cases, their letters were in the record, but they weren't listed as persons of record, so they were denied due process. In some cases, their letters didn't make it into the record. We know they sent them in because they copied us when they did send them in. So, would I just-
Well, the records, the ones that were in the record prior to 12 noon were already in the record. I did not go through those. The ones that came in after 12 noon, we've added today on the record.
I'm not speaking of this process, just extra care, because some people were denied their due process rights and-
And I don't know that to be a fact. I know that's what you're saying, but I don't know that to be a fact. So, okay.
I'll send you a letter on that point sometime. Any questions?
Other questions?
So, I just would like staff to address what the slide is showing with the density differences, particularly because-
Right now, I'm asking if there are any questions of Mr. Smith.
Well, he, staff may need to actually-
Yeah, but right now-
Talk about some of the details, yeah.
Yes, but right now, I have Mr. Smith at the podium.
No, that's fine.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay. So that concludes the sign-up list for speakers. Was there anyone else who wishes to speak whose name I did not call? Okay, so now, Mr. Rivera, you get the opportunity to respond, but also the board may have questions of our staff and of our legal counsel. And I do want to, I want to address the density issue for whoever the appropriate person is, whether it's you, Mr. Severs, Ms. Connors. You have a burden too, Mr. Rivera, whether it's legal, whoever's going to answer this. And I don't know, was that your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to, particularly with respect to the chart, because the city has one number, we have a different number.
I think there's two things, two people need to speak on the density issue, Madam Chair, and members of the board. One, David Warner, Principal Counsel. One is the question of, that is brought up repeatedly by those testifying, as to which law applies. And while there's a lot of testimony regarding the unlawful CSP or the unlawful process on which it was undertaken, or that it was dishonest, those kind of things. You know, the legality of that instrument is before the court. Courts decide whether something's illegal or not. We have to follow the law that's before us. So, when it comes to calculating density, if you look at pages 57 through 68 of the technical staff report, it contains the law that we have to follow. And so, how that law was followed, Sherry can describe and show you how the computation was done, but knowing the framework, I think, is important too.
Okay, Ms. Connor, thank you.
Good afternoon. Sherry Connor with the subdivision and zoning section. When staff evaluated conformance with the CSP approval, we looked at it in totality with what the council had approved for the site. And what was clear is that it was a 72-unit maximum. Included in that was an exhibit that showed 31 lots for the upper parcel as a maximum. It seemed debatable, you know, how that calculation was made, and so, we did not speak to that point specifically because, as is noted here, it's not clearly specified in the council's order how to arrive at that calculation of density, but it is clear that it's a 72-unit maximum. And so, we found that the preliminary plan is consistent with that approval.
Okay. Did that, because I have some questions of the applicant too, so when you finish with that.
Clarifies one point of, we're below the 72 units. But I would also like to know how to, what is our base? What's our denominator in the actual size of the lot that we're using to calculate that? Because I think that is what's driving the differences in these bars that are up on the slides right now.
Yes, I think the order and the way it's calculated and the exhibits provided and the plans approved with the CSP base that on gross area.
And what does that include? So if you can just pull up maybe the slides that we had before, there's differences in where this is, right? So we have the whole section of the parcels that are being included with the townhomes, we have the out parcel. We also have a little sliver of an easement that is partially being used by the city right now, I think, in one of the parks. So I just want to know, what, how do you calculate the number that you use in the denominator? Is it all of the yellow and all of the orange there? Is it part of the orange and all of the yellow? Like, what are we, what are we doing?
It is all of it. It appears to the exhibit approved with the CSP that the upper parcel is one land area that is accounted for. This is also copied in the staff report on page 22, where we provide the exhibit specified in the district council order. It does calculate the entire upper parcel and density therein, and the entire lower parcel and the density therein. For the lower parcel, that easement area, the applicant is required to provide a boundary survey along with their application. They did do that, they did provide a deed for the property indicating the area under their ownership, and it does include that easement area that was formerly Clover Street.
Okay, thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to know.
And before you, just before, I would like staff just to speak briefly to some of the things that Mr. Smith outlined, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, as part of his testimony with regards to the technical staff report and some corrections on, well, he started on page one, I'm not sure where he ended up, but if those need to be addressed as part of corrections or not.
The location and all that.
Yeah, and the acreage and-
And the ownership, and then, if it's not Jamal anymore, and the applicant, you're going to have to address some of those too.
Right.
Because I'm sure you have accurate information to provide.
Yes, so the, there is a technical error in the report regarding the location. It should say southeast instead of southwest, and we'll make that correction in the resolution.
Okay, but at the appropriate time, if you would just, based on the testimony, address what's going to be updated so that it's in the record, and I'll make sure that that's included as part of the motion.
Yes.
Okay.
So, when you say southeast, I don't think it's actually southeast. I think it's the southwest and northeast portion of that intersection, because Fortieth is that little curve right there, and Gallatin is coming over that way. So, if you go to the bottom, southwest of that intersection, that's the out parcel. If you go to the northeast of that, that's going to be the parcel that we're at.
We can definitely expand that description of the location to more accurately articulate the two tracks.
Okay.
Thank you.
And is there a number of others that- Things that were addressed, and Mr. Rivera, you know, we may have, we may require our staff to answer some of these things, but the environmental issues raised by Mr. Muth? Okay. And the stormwater management is an issue. I want you to be able to address that. I know Ms. Imordino mentioned traffic, but the traffic and the schools are addressed. I want to hear about, more about the playground. I want our staff to address, well, Mr. Smith's comments about the cherry picking facts to demonstrate conformance with the general plan, 2035, and the sector plans. And actually, you need to address the issue about the ownership. Mr. Rivera says, your case, your burden, so you can go forward first.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the record again, Norman Rivera. Let me start out with stormwater management, because it's in my hand. But the short answer is, or probably the long answer is, there's an overall department permits inspection enforcement concept plan that was approved for the entire property. We broke it into two phases, which is not uncommon in any project for ease of administration. We wanted to start our model units on the upper parcel, then move down to the lower parcel. The upper parcel being right on these streets with utilities was much easier to start off with, so that was a logical decision on my client's part. In order to get to this point, you have to file for a stormwater management concept plan approval, which is in the code. So we did not go around the code, we followed the code. And in fact, you can approve a preliminary plan with a submitted concept plan, but you need an approved concept plan prior to detailed site plan approval, which is already upstairs or downstairs for review. But we already have a concept plan approval, and it's in my hand. I could give it to your staff to show to the board if you wish, but it's dated March 22nd, 2019. And there's an actual plan that goes with a stormwater management concept plan. You have to show the drainage area.
Do we already have that, you're saying, on the record?
It's already part of your staff report, that it's acknowledged on page six, that there is a Deepi concept plan approved. And that's a checklist item for acceptance. Is it there or not? And it is there. And it is approved, and it covers all sites. Now, from a technical standpoint, they both operate under stormwater management concept rules. At the end of the day, the upper lot will have two bio retention facilities. The water drains to the south because it's downhill. There's an existing storm drain pipe that crosses Gallatin Street that's already there because that's where the water went from the WSSE building. So the water goes downhill, there's a pipe under the lot, Tom's following it right now, and it outfalls into another property. So all water starts here and goes somewhere else, and that's natural. So you can't have an independent stormwater management system just for one parcel in isolation because the water is treated, released, and gone forward. My point earlier is that there was no treatment. It was just naked water flushing through. After we're done, it'll be treated and it will still go through to the outfall. But the sites are tied together because of that technical reason. And the other part of the stormwater concept plan is Deepi wants to see the site in totality. We own the whole 8.26 acres, which now appreciates staff confirming that on the boundary survey, so it's clear the gross acreage is 8.26 when we get to the density discussion.
Okay, so for the record, counsel for the applicant, Mr. Rivera, has just shown us the location, the boundaries for the stormwater management plan. I will, so that the people who are present can see that. Now, notwithstanding that, I understand that sometimes there may be problems that people who live in the area observe that we can't see. And so, you all always have the opportunity to provide your input to Deepi on this as well, as I just wanted to say.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And we heard the same concern. We started this process in November of 2017 at Vigilante Coffee. That was one of the first issues. A lot of people call that parking lot our park. At point of fact, it was always owned, or not always owned, it was owned at the time by the Jamal Corporation, who we were the contract purchaser to. So, notwithstanding that, people like to use it and recreate on it, it's not their land, it's private land. Now, if they wanted to buy it, there could have been an offer, I mean, that's a whole different conversation. But what happened, and I'm starting to evolve to Commissioner Dorner's question about the playground, is that during these negotiations from 17 to now, the city had always expressed a need to or desire to expand McGruder Park. So we worked out an agreement that went to the city council on June 14th, 2018, and the city voted to approve an agreement to purchase at a reduced price, 1.8 acres of the 1,4.66 on the lower lot. But notwithstanding that, it's still part of the gross acreage, because until it transfers to some other entity, it's still ours as to density. So, point of fact, the two goals of the sector plan were to foster single-family residential units, didn't differentiate between attached or detached, both counted. Secondly, it said, offer opportunities to expand parkland for McGruder Park, and that's page 189 of the Gateway Arts District Sector Plan, which was part of our CSP record. So we are doing both with the CSP, promoting single-family attached and detached, and we would also entertain a sale of a larger part of the land, not required for mandatory dedication, but larger, and pay the fee in lieu. So, recreationally, we're going to pay a fee to Parks Department in recognition of the city's concern about the pedestrian bike bridge. Perhaps we give the land or the money to Parks, and Parks gives it to the city, or we give it directly to the city, but it's a set amount, around $16,000 for the replacement of a pedestrian bike bridge. So we would take that commitment, since we already have it, and give it to the city or the county, and under 24134A, the code allows for that in the subdivision regulations. In an area where you're in a municipality, the choice is commission or the municipality or fee in lieu or rec facilities in lieu, lots of different combinations depending on the circumstances. So, that's what's going to happen with the park. If and when we go forward and we go to the lower lot, we'll continue those negotiations in good faith with the city, because we signed that agreement. We thought the city would recommend approval, but the next vote after the vote on the agreement was a vote to say no on the overall project. So here we are now, that we still are on of that agreement because we do want to expand the parkland. And we've designed, if you see on the CSP drawing before, it's a really nice plan with that area to be a park. And it'll expand into McGruder Park, whoops, and that playground will be further buffered by that action. And all those units that you see on the CSP will be the natural surveillance that looks down at the playground, the park, so they'll be always on the street. Excuse me, if I could just go to the density, Ms. Connor and Mr. Severs in the report.
Mr. Rivera, just real quick before you jump onto the density, so the part that you've, and thank you for all the description on that, and I appreciate the proffer for the improvements to the bike bridge, and we can figure out how that actually happens later.
Sure.
What was the section that you sold to the city already that's under, that hasn't been transferred yet? Is that the easement that's currently been used for a while by the city?
That would be part of the overall 1.8 acres. So 1.8 acres, as Mr. Smith says, is like the belly of the lower lot, a buddy of McGruder and the playground. So the Clover Street easement, which is our part of our land, next to the playground, is part of the 1.8. So, if and when that happens, you get the 1.8, which includes the easement and the park, I mean, the playground, which is offsite anyway, but it gives you more land over there on that end.
Okay. And is there any plans to- And is there any plans to actually demolish the playground itself? I assume probably not-
No.
...since you're actually transferring that portion into the-
That's totally up to the city, it's their park.
Okay.
We may augment it, but we'll work that out later.
Okay. Thanks.
Let's see, density. So, Ms. Connor, Mr. Severs, in the report and today's testimony, went through how they arrived at the density, and the county, district council approved it. So, the, the information about the units per acre was part of the dicta of the order in the planning board's reports. The only baseline denominator, use your word, Mr. Dorner, is that 6.7 is the max for single-family detach in the R-55 zone. The distinguishing factor in a DDOZ, which is the Gateway Arts District Plan, any TDOZ, Largo Town Center, anywhere where there's a DDOZ, Section 27548.26B allows an applicant to request to change the table of uses and/or the zoning and/or the development district standards of a sector plan. So, Mr. Smith and others have said it's set in stone. It's not set in stone. The district council numerous times, and the board has approved many sector plan projects up and down Route 1, every metro, every TDOZ, they all use this provision to amend standards, because, as you well know, anytime you write a standard, if it's nine feet, somebody wants eight feet or 10 feet, so there had to be a mechanism to adjust it. You can adjust tables of uses. Hyattsville had several use adjustments to allow a music studio. It just wasn't thought of. So, there had to be flexibility in the code to allow for that. So, the zoning in this case, it's on page five of your report, and the general plan 2035 says in fact, where is that? That has to be context-sensitive infill development. So, what that means is, what's the context of where the infill is? And the infill is right next to those R-10 apartments, there's R-18 apartments up to the upper left, there's a park, the bog, the park, and single-family detach. So, that is the context within which the board and the staff analyze the CSP, and that's how they said 6.7 is, has to be the max for, for single-family detached. But the council said, in recognition of all the factors, you get 72 max total. So, while that number nine may be sticking everybody's minds, the number is 72 overall, because the footnote for the CSP order also says that we want 72 units, and they approved 72 units, recognizing the applicant's efforts to assist the city in the additional 1.8 acres of parkland. So, it's a tangled web, but that's the, that was the overall intent of how that got there. And specifically, a DDOZ can, recognize, case by case, what is in the area to come up with that density. Last point on the density is that the district council order did not mandate a per-acre unit calculation. Tradition 3 mandated, show the 72 units and show where the park is, and that's what the certified plan shows. So, those are the major issues. Stormwater, density, park, who owns it, the PUE, the hardship there on the variation for the utilities is that there, because this, these plats, these were old lots from 1898, so was the road. Utilities are there, trees are there. To do an easement with all these existing, maybe 100-year-old improvements would be a hardship, and because the utilities are already there, there was no need to overlay an easement to try to go around all that existing stuff in the, in the right of way. Let me look at this a second.
Well, let me, let me say this, because you're going to have the opportunity, I need for, we're going to wrap this up. I'm telling, this has been going on for a good while, and we're going to wrap this up. So, I will tell you this, the, in accordance with the planning board rules of procedure, specifically Section 11, A through F, each side gets an opportunity to provide, one last thing, I see, oh, I have two people there raising their hands, so I see that Mr. Smith is raising his hand and Ms. Imordino. Somebody has to decide on the opposition side who's going to speak very succinctly, not repetitive, not to be repetitive, because we're replete with information. And then you get to close out, Mr. Rivera.
Yeah.
You're raising your hand, so.
Yeah, I just have one question. Are you stating unprivately that the-
I can't, you have to be on the record if you're going to ask your question.
Will not be messed with, that the playground will remain where it is.
Yes.
Okay, can you repeat the question, because that wasn't on the microphone?
The question was raised by the board itself, and Ms. Imordino, was whether or not the playground equipment would be affected at all. The answer is no. We would augment it.
Okay.
Not by us.
Okay, ma'am, you can't ask, you can't ask those questions from there, because you're not on the record. And so, one person gets to speak. Are you designating, it's, Mr., the city of Hyattsville, everybody's, you're designating, Mr. Smith?
Whatever.
Okay.
That concludes my presentation.
Mr. Chandler, you get the opportunity. One of you, one of you gets to, one of you gets to speak on behalf of the opposition. Can you raise the microphone?
Certainly. I will speak on behalf of the city. There was a question about how the city arrived at calculations in terms of density, and the density that the city used comes straight from the district council's decision.
Okay.
So, we didn't use any other calculation. The method we used to evaluate the, the density numbers were based on advisement from your staff about which of the unbuildable parcels is associated with what set of unit types. And so, units, the townhouse units were associated with the lower, if you go to the right, nope, the open, to the left, right there. Okay, so those townhouse unit, the, the land area associated with that was the open parcel, I believe it's A1. Yes. The upper, single-family units were associated with parcels A2. And so, when the council considered the densities with respect to the district council resolution, we were responding to those densities and those land areas. Now, we looked at if you considered it en masse, and there was difficulty applying density standards with two different housing products on one parcel. It's, it's, the math gets very fuzzy, and so, when we were provided the guidance that A1 is associated with townhouse and A2 is associated with the upper lots, we accepted that guidance, it made sense, and it's, it's math that could be calculated. With respect to the footnote in the 72 units and the densities, the district council resolution contradicts itself. You can't have two sets of math equations to get to a density number. And so, either the board needs to support the conditions that were adopted, or the footnote that introduces an exhibit at a zoning hearing rather than here at a subdivision hearing. I think we're at least owed some clarification, and I don't know that the clarification provided in the staff report gets us there.
Okay. Okay.
So, just to clarify, your, your base number, your denominator, didn't include the out parcel down below, then?
It did not.
Okay. And that's why it's so much higher?
Yeah. It, it did not. We were simply looking at the subject parcel for this subdivision case, and it was our understanding that the, the lower parcel was not subject, so we weren't going to reference it. We were simply limiting our correspondence to the upper lot. In hindsight, I think everyone would have been better served had the upper lot also been re-subdivided between the single-family detached and the attached product. It would have made the math a lot simpler, I think, for everyone, including your staff.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I had said one person, Mr. Smith, you, just, any quick point that you have to make, because you had the most time to, to present today.
It will be, it will be quick. I just want to, I just want to be very clear. The statement that that easement was included, it, under the deed, and that the deed said 4.66 is simply incorrect. I've got the deed of transfer, I've got both deeds of transfer on my laptop. Both place the, the area of the lower parcel at 4.1008. So did your staff, your zoning and subdivision state, period. The state, the tax records, the sector plan say 3.98. On the upper parcel, they say 3.19. These are, these are not, these are not soft numbers, they're official numbers, and they're readily available from the public.
Okay.
Second, this is where we derive this calculation. The district council can say whatever they want, but the reason they're in court is because their calculation of density doesn't comply with the zoning ordinance. I'll give you the specific citations. 27-107.
Are you challenging the validity of the district council decision?
Well, I'm, what I'm challenging is their reliance on it, and saying that you can't rely on it either, because it, it conflicts with the clear letter of the law. The, the zoning ordinance lays out how density is calculated.
So, their, your, so their decision does not change that?
Their decision ignores the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Their decision ignores-
But their decision right now is their decision, right?
Yeah, but you, you shouldn't live by an illegal decision, because, because ultimately, you have to also look at what the zoning ordinance says.
It's not been determined illegal as of yet.
Okay, well, I want to explain to you why, why we think you should rely on a different methodology, and then you can do whatever you want.
But didn't you just explain that before in your presentation?
I think I did. I want you to use specific citations, if you want to rely on them. 27-107.0166 defines density. It defines density as units per net lot area. 27-107.01161 defines net lot area. It says it's the gross area minus any land in the 100-year floodplain, minus public ways, alleys, streets, and the like. 27-442H defines the units that are allowed per, per net lot area. 27-442B defines the minimum lot area that's allowed, period. You, you're not bound to rely on, on the council's calculation if it's illegal, and you should, I believe, I, I proffer, you should take a close look at that. And I want to answer the point that Mr. Rivera. When the, our city council voted to buy the 1.8 acres, they were very clear, the council said very clear, I'm only voting on it for this as a defensive measure, in case the project goes through, we get something. It was not disclosed at that time that Worline planned to build its stormwater management facility on that land. There's nothing in the record that indicates it. The first admission I've seen to that was in Mr. Worline's response to our council in February. And I have to ask, I'll, I'll say this too. If this, this net lot area issue still bubbles up, whether they sell that land to the city or not, because that land will remain in the floodplain, so they cannot count it in their density, in their density calculation. They cannot, by law. The law is unequivocal in that. You cannot count land in the 100-year floodplain as part of your lot, as part of your net lot area, period. All we're trying to do is, is understand the law as plain language, and we're presenting it to you, and we'd like to rely on you to rely on it. And I have to ask, if, if you didn't sell that land to the city, you couldn't make the claim that somehow your project is necessary for the city to expand the park. Again, the city, the city has used .55 acres for a long time. Worline does not own it. There's no source, there's no official source that says that they do. The facts say that they don't. And so, what they're doing is actually, the city's getting 1.25 acres on which Worline plans to build its stormwater facility. That's not really adding to our park or our open space. It's giving us their stormwater facility to serve their project, and that's it. That's all we get. And their plans that are presented in your record don't show that, that playground standing there, as far as I've seen. Again, I haven't read all 104 files, but the, but the graphics I've seen don't depict that playground continuing to exist on that land. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would, I would ask our council, especially based on Mr. Smith's numerable comments with regards to what we can, should, and should be considering, especially as it relates to matter of fact and matter of law. In addition, in Mr. Smith's earlier testimony, he, and I'm quoting you, I believe, but you indicated that our staff had essentially cherry-picked what elements of various plans they, they used to determine conformance, and I would like council to address that as well.
Thank you. David Warner, Principal Counsel. Yeah, I'll address, I'll address each of those matters. First, to reiterate again what I said previously, that was not applied again in that last testimony, was the district council has adopted a CSP under our zoning ordinance. That CSP governs how we interpret and whether we approve the preliminary plan. That governs our density calculations, that governs all the other attributes of this preliminary plan. It has to comply with that CSP. And staff has repeated what is in the TSR as to how they came up with that calculation, and they found that it conformed. The general plan, first of all, is used as a tool to implement zoning. So, when the district council adopts zoning ordinances, approves zoning, it is to implement the general plan. So, it comes with that presupposition. The CSP is the governing law. There's nothing unlawful about it, there's nothing illegal about it for our consideration at this time. In the general plan, there are policies, guidelines, directions, everything designed to implement the vision for the county, correct? To where it applies. In the preliminary plan approval process, the general plan is referred to for certain things. Public facilities, we identify things in master plans that are used to guide things like bike facilities or other dedications. This technical staff report reviewed the general plan, reviewed the sector plan as well, determined those provisions that were applicable, and found that it complied.
So, the short answer is our hands are tied.
Microphone.
The short answer is that our hands are tied.
By the law.
By the law.
Right.
Right, but you, it's your discretion to determine that it-
Conformance.
-whether it applies or not, or complies or not.
The conformance, okay.
Right. But you can't operate outside the law that you've been given.
Right. Okay, so.
And Madam Chair, I did have a couple of other items to add to the record.
Hold on a second, because I'm, we're about to wrap this up. You can add your items. If you have anything else, Ms. Connor or Mr. Severs, to add on the conformance with the general plan and the various other plans, that's fine, you can add that. Mr. Rivera, you get, you get to close out in accordance with our planning board rules of procedure, Section 11. Okay.
Thank you. David Warner, Principal Counsel. There were just a couple matters brought up in the testimony that aren't specifically addressed in the technical staff report, and I want to make sure those are entered into the record. First of all, we reviewed all notices that were provided as required by law, and believe that all the notices were provided in compliance with requirements of law. The development activity monitoring system, which provides information about development applications, is a service provided by the commission to give people information about our development applications. Our obligations under the law are to provide public records in compliance with the PIA. It was indicated to me, and one of the individuals who testified, that they indeed did get copies from David Simon of all of the documents related to this application. So, from my understanding of what they testified to, and my knowledge of how staff operates when they are requested to give documents, all of the documents that we were required to provide, we appeared to, to provide. So, I think we're in compliance with that. And I think that was, and then the last issue about having the ability to participate in the development process, my understanding is all the public hearings that were necessary to be held under the CSP, both by us and the district council were held, and then today the public hearing again provides that opportunity, and I believe we're in compliance with all of those requirements as well.
Thank you. Ms. Connor, anything to add? Mr. Severs? Okay, Mr. Rivera, anything on this side? Okay, Mr. Hunt, I mean, excuse me, I'm sorry. Mr. Rivera is the head thing. I know. Okay.
It was always his fault, then. Again, for the record, Norman Rivera, I would like to adopt the testimony of Mr. Warner. It's a very eloquent statement of how we got to this point. DDOZs are a different animal than a regular Euclidean zone that has those more traditional net lot, per acre, et cetera, but this is a different animal. Sherry Connor or Tom Severs did a great job, Tom, picking up this- Tom, picking up this case with three years of history behind it, and we would request your approval with the revised Condition 13, as Mr. Severs indicated he was concurrent with. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask, call for a vote, and whatever happens here, if it goes up, if it's approved, then I'm going to ask you to continue to work with the community, okay? Because the community has rights, and the developer-owner of the property, they have, you all have rights as well. But it's always good if you can collaborate with the, with the community and with the city of Hyattsville. So whatever happens today, and Mr. Rivera, I'm looking at you. Whatever happens today, make sure that communication continues because some of these issues can be resolved. That means, that means a real effort in earnest on your part, the part of the applicants, and that also means being receptive to the community, too. So it's a two-way process. So that's what's going to have to happen in terms of communication. Now, is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that we adopt the findings of staff, and I would also ask that our council's testimony, which he read into the record moments ago, also be included as a finding and incorporated in the final resolution. In addition to the technical corrections that were mentioned earlier that staff is going to address and that were raised by Mr. Smith's testimony, be corrected and also included in the final recommendation, resolution, I'm sorry. And move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve preliminary plan 4-18001 and variation from Section 24-122A, along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report, to include the modification of Condition Number 13, including comma or as modified by DSP, period, in the preamble portion of that condition. And also, I would like to ensure the record reflects a proffered motion by the applicant to transfer said amount to cover the improvements for the offsite park bridge. And I believe that will take place in cooperation and in partnership with the city of Hyattsville.
Second.
We have a motion, and a second. Is there discussion? Under discussion, I would just say two things. One, I want to refer to the opinion given by our principal counsel just now. It's not so much testimony, but it is, it's legal advice, and we have adopted that as a finding. That's consistent with the motion maker and not refer to it as testimony.
Thank you.
The other thing is I want to thank everyone for coming today. This is clearly a tough case. There were issues early on, some of which, you know, I was not happy with, but we know we're moving forward, but it's got to be collaboration here. So I just, I want to say that, and please do so in earnest. But I do thank everyone for coming and for their testimony. Was there any other discussion? All in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. Hunt, is there any, is there any additional business that come before us today?
Madam Chair, that's all for today.
Planning Board is adjourned.